Was on a rock.
Who?
Brock Hudson.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Thank you.
Okay, I will call to order the West Jordan City Council meeting tonight. It's the committee meeting of, or the committee, the whole meeting to discuss budget. We do have a separate budget committee. However, since this is the first time we're addressing the budget in this form of government, the establishment of the committees is relatively new. We want to make sure that every council member had the opportunity to participate in the conversation. So in order to open it up, so all members could participate if they'd like in this special city council meeting, it would be, it would be doable. So this is a special city council meeting that we're having. Not a regular, not a regular city council night. We do have, it looks like all members of the city council present except for council member Jacob and council member Lamb. We also are joined by Corbin Lee, who's a CAO.
Chad's there. Chad's actually in the list.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there is. Sorry, I didn't remember. I remember having bumped you over. So it looks like Zach, the only one that that's not here then. One, two, three, four, five, six. Jealous. Since this is not a regular city council meeting, it's going to be a little bit more relaxed than most. Please don't wait for me to call on you necessarily to speak. Feel free to jump out as necessary. Also, if you want to just, I know the meetings, the Zoom meetings can get kind of old. If you want to play around with the backgrounds, as long as it's appropriate, please feel free to do so. And tonight, we're really going to focus the majority of the conversation on our budget for this upcoming year. So we've had a lot of conversations where we've had an opportunity to hear what's changing, what's changed as far as the organization's concerned, as far as the, what the mayor's been doing, also what we've been impacted by as far as changes in the form of government, because this year is very different than the prior years. Tonight is really our opportunity to have an opportunity, our opportunity to sit down with Ms. Deck, our finance director, so she can hear our thoughts as to what's important to us about the budget, what modifications we may like to see, or things that we'd like to see remain rather than change. So with that, I wanted to make sure that every member of the council had a few moments to go through and without interruption, share their thoughts, share their concerns, share what's important to them. Denise will be listening, taking down notes and potentially asking clarifying questions or offering some additional insight as we go. So let me stop sharing. So Denise, you can jump in and share your screen. We talked about setting how we would set this up so that we can take the conversation from tonight and turn it into a kind of a working agenda rather than have something that's set by myself and council member Green. We want to make sure every member of the council has the ability to put something out there for discussion. So there was a note that went out to everybody earlier this week asking for everyone to come prepared with a list of either principles, budgeting principles, budgeting philosophies that are important that you'd like discussed, or specific items within the budget that you would like brought up as a council. We'll go through and we'll track each one of those. You'll see how it's kind of grouped by category so we can sort and kind of aggregate everything together a little bit easier. After everybody has the opportunity to go through and share their items, we're going to go through this list again and see how many members of the council feel like this is something that should be discussed. You'll see some of these things already have one, because obviously one person put it out there. There's a number two next to some of them. Because two members of the council would like to speak with these or have have voice that they'd like this discussed. You'll also see that there's a column out here for priority. If something is a significant priority to you, please let us know so that Denise can make a little mark here to indicate that's a priority. You'll see like one of mine is the dumpster rental fee. I may be the only one that that that's important to, but that one's really, really important to me. If there are items that are really, really important to you, let's note it. Once we've got the full sheet created and compiled, we're going to go back and sort everything first by priority and then by the number of council members who wish to discuss that item. And that will become the kind of the working agenda for for this meeting and future budget meetings. Once we're done with the items that are out there, then well, as we're going, depending on how long it takes to get through the items, if we don't get through them all tonight or in the next meeting, whatever it takes, once we're through the items, Ms. Deck will bring back to us an updated budget that includes the modifications that we've requested. We'll go through those to make sure that that's accurate to what we were hoping for. And then we'll have a budget that will be ready to, ready for a vote. One thing to point out is we do go through these item by item. If we don't have a consensus on it, then then we'll move on. If there are, I would suggest that there are three people that want to address something and at least have an opportunity to speak, we'll do that. Or even if one person has addressed, has noted something as a priority, as a council, we'll, we'll speak to it and have the conversation. But at the end of the conversation, if we don't have four members of the council who would like to change the budget to reflect the conversation, then then the tentative budget stands and we move forward. So any, any questions about kind of the the format or the framework for this evening?
Quick question on this list. Did we get the the survey? And who wanted, is that included in this or no?
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure. I was muted. I do have the survey results. Chair McConaughey asked that I share those as soon as we do this, kind of after this round the table piece.
Okay.
Yeah, the survey was rather focused on specific items, and I didn't want to put anybody in a box to start with. Just leave it wide open so you can address anything under the sun. Okay, so if there are no further questions, let's, I've got a timer over here and I don't necessarily want to like hold a strict to the timer, but just for the sake of moving things along. Five minutes, does no more than five minutes seem appropriate to, to start off and share our thoughts? Anybody feel like we need more than five minutes per person?
All right.
I don't know that we need more than five minutes, but I also, I don't know that we need to cut people off unless they're way over that either.
No, I don't necessarily want to cut anybody off, but but at the same time, I don't want one person, I could easily see myself doing 45 minutes to an hour. But if someone else only has three minutes, I want to try and avoid some of that disparity.
Let's use a timer then.
I'll just kind of run it in the background and I'll ping on the chat when we hit the five, so we can kind of police ourselves that way. Okay, so we'll start. Councilmember Green has agreed to be the guinea pig. So councilmember Green, do you want to start talking through the items that that are important to you?
Well, and I, I was the overachiever and I already sent them to Denise, so she's already got them posted on the screen. But my, my thought, my thoughts were is that I want to see some cost reductions based in operations budget, the office supplies, travel, memberships, some overtime seemed excessive in a couple areas. For the memberships, this is just, and I'm just throwing out a couple of thoughts as I, as I deal with the membership. Memberships, I think we need to look at in an awful way, an awful lot like we would look giving money to an outside group under the the studies that are supposed to occur for under 10, is it 1082? And under the Utah code, I think we need to figure out what their inherent value to the city is. And if they don't have an inherent value, then maybe we shouldn't be there. When it comes to fees, we have some fees that have not been adjusted since pre 2006. The cost of providing some of those minimal services has definitely gone up since 2006 and 14 years. So I think that we can, we can address how to increase fees. My personal philosophy is I don't want us to go in debt or use out of the reserves, anything more than about 2.65 million. I think if we, my, from my philosophy, if we go right now, we have nine something million dollars in reserve. We use three point something. We are getting precipitately close to the five, I mean, if we, if we have to def, if we have to use reserves one more year, we're to the point where we're out of reserves because we have the mandatory 5% and maybe forced to actually do a property tax without that. So I want to keep the, the reserve spending at two point, someplace under three. So you can see that between fees and cost reductions, I would like to see at least $500,000 cut and increased. I would like to see us, and I don't know if we can do this as part of the budget process, but we do need to adopt a policy on West Jordan City employees and the uniforms they wear. It seems that like that's hit and miss across the the budgets. The cemetery perpetual fund, as Denise and I were talking, the cemetery is actually being funded about 170K, if you look at the budget, out of the general fund. And it doesn't make sense that people who aren't going to use the West Jordan City Cemetery aren't paying for that. And so I would like to look at figuring out how we establish a cemetery perpetual fund like an endowment that a lot of other cemeteries do. Maybe we need to look at some small surcharges on, on fees. I don't want to see the community art center this year until we can identify that we have sources for O and M. I'm pretty much decided that I'm not in favor of property tax this year, property tax increase this year because the utility transfer is really a tax and we're, we're doing that and to do both of those would be a double whammy. I want to make sure that we're balancing our long-term consequences and short-term solutions. We need to start looking at funding the capital improvement, but that's not for this year's budget. Are there, are there things that can be put out, RFP? Denise, you've got there outsourcing versus in-house. Well, and then the next one is the regular RFPs. Outsourcing versus in-house, we, we can look at that. Rob's convinced me of one that I'm not sure we need to go there, but looking at competitive things is not bad and but I, and last but not least, and this is one that I, we, I realized that I had missed Denise. And that is, I want to, I want the, a study of some sort. I don't know what that study would be. To look at that Highlands District and look at the possibility of just getting rid of it. From what I've heard from a couple of residents, we're not getting, they're not getting the bang for their buck. Or at least it doesn't seem like it. And so that's just one of those that do we need to, do we need to dump that to save some money and not have to be involved in a couple of things? And I think that that is my budget priorities, or whatever you want to call them in no particular order for me. So I will turn it over to the next person.
Is there anything that you would flag on there as an especially high priority for you?
I would say the highest priority for me is the no more than 2.65 million in reserves to, to use. I, I, I want to see us down to way under, I want to see us way down under three. So yeah.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Whitelock.
Okay. Um. So my, my, my presentation is a little different than Kelvin's, but first I want to thank all that have poured over both the individual budgets and the entire budget. My statements are just mine. And I mean no offense when I ask if we reduce items. What we all need to understand is that the real issue, as I see it, is a long-term problem. And we need long-term solutions, not fixes for just this budget cycle. I understand that we as residents want to keep more of our ever dwindling money for ourselves. In light of this, when I spoke with Denise, I asked if she could prepare some scenarios to show options of what the impact would look like for the average homeowner in our city with different possible solutions. Hence, when I'm done, I asked the chair to allow her to share her ideas and numbers. Another overarching point I would like to see used going forward is to budget for as close to actual needs as possible while realizing that it may mean more frequent budget amendments for the, oh no, the worst happened. I think it will paint a more precise financial picture for our city. I also want to ask for the next budget that our council has a budget priority and that we put funding in there for it. For me, this might be aesthetics of the city. I feel like if we don't A, get our financial house in order and B, start investing in our city, how can we expect others to? I know that people would love to have a Trader Joe's and a high-end steakhouse. We have to invest in our city in order to have others invest in our city. Now, my ideas for possible savings, which could add over $100,000. A question that I have that I, I think we should get answered is, I know that Parks has taken a hit yet again. But when I look at their graph and see who is in parks, I see that we have both a parks management, manager and a superintendent plus four managers, basically super supervisors or managers over four different areas of parks. I think that's an area that should be looked into. On page 41, and there's an expense of over, I don't remember, it was over 10,000 though, but 9,000 of that per Denise is a membership for the mayor or the city and the National Leagues of Cities and Towns. I suggest for this year that we don't become members, but have the mayor and maybe even a council member to attend it, kind of getting to what Kelvin said, and see if that we feel it would be a benefit to our residents or not. For the mayor to go this year, I don't have a problem with that. And for a non-member, it's only an extra $100 to attend versus a member. On page 47, this has to do with Denise. Apparently when Denise was hired, her salary, in order to get her the money that we wanted to get her, to get her to come and work with us, they did some fancy stuff. And so her salary is not just what we're paying her, but also a car allowance. But they did the car allowance, not because she was going to be driving a ton as our finance director, but because that's how they could get her the extra money. I would sure like to see us change that because I don't think that's fair to Denise. And I feel she's bringing a lot of value to our city. And I think we need to get that adjusted so that all of that goes into her, her salary because otherwise that's, that's not really fair for her, for her retirement. So I'd like to see, I don't know how we address that, but I think we should. And page 75, city attorneys. I would like the attorney's office to assign us an attorney that will be in attendance at our council meetings to weigh in when we have questions. When we first discussed the attorney, it was decided we would not retain our own, but use current city staff. I feel it's important that we have a person identified that we can start building a relationship with and that they attend our meetings in some form. And also with the attorney's office, this has to do with office supplies. And I noticed this in a few places and I'm bringing them up. Their office supplies were around 4,000, yet they're asking, and this is kind of consistent for the two years that we were given, but they're asking for 9,200. And I think we need to, in those areas, I think in this budget, we need to look at them line by line and cut them. Because again, if, if our staff needs, truly needs things, I want them to have them. But I would rather handle these as budget adjustments than, than saying that we need all of this money upfront. And for professional and tech, 60 has been the highest that they've used in those two years. But they're asking for 95, 91. So I think we should go down to the 60 range. Page 95, office supplies again, from 19 to 14,000, but yet they've only used 12 to 13. On page 133 of the capital projects, their training decrease, they've used four to five, and now they've got it under 12,000, they've got it up to 12,500. Unless they can give us specifics, I think those areas need to be cut down. On page 143, when we look at the park strips, we currently contract that out. I think we need to look at maybe bringing in that in-house and see if that would be more fiscally responsible. I don't know, but certainly we should look at that and perhaps do a study. Page 151 is the police department. I'm concerned that we have cut them too much. Public safety, I probably am going to agree with a pack, a council member pack. I, I'm not happy with decreases to our police department. I'm worried about that. On page 152, I've done that one. And page 163, animal services, Kelvin brought this up, uniforms. That the cost for their uniforms has gone up, but theoretically I would think their staffing would have gone down because of losing Murray. So I agree, we need to just overall look at uniforms. Denise shared again with me that she has an idea that she's working on to save residents money. So thank you. And they've got under professional tech, they used 5 to 6,000, but they're requesting 19,500. Unless they can justify that, I think it needs to come down. Then they have another supply budget, which I would like to see in the future, not to have other supply budgets in our budget. I don't think that's very clear and I think we need more clarity and.
That's page 163, not 153.
Well, thank you.
Sorry, continue.
And since it was 1,000 to 1,500, they're requesting 3,900. In areas like this, I think we need to cut it. We need to cut these things. Page 171, I'm excited to see that the fire department's doing a junior fire academy. That's actually not on 171, it's back in the fees, but bring it up here. But for their overtime, they use 220 to 274,000, yet they're requesting 400,000. I think we need to cut that by 100,000 and take it down to 300. And again, we can do a budget amendment if they need it. I tried to reach out to Chief Maxfield. He wasn't available, but I talked to Chris and he thought that was possibly probably doable and made sense. So that right there is 100,000. Page 233, the water building and grounds, they used 40 to 42, but they're asking for 65,000. I'd say reduce it to 50. Page 247, wastewater, equipment supplies. And Maine, they use 73 to 80, but they're asking for 129. I'd reduce it to 100. Their other supplies, they use 60 to 61, yet they're asking for 120. I take 70 away. Page 282, I don't know where this fits in, but we've need to address this because on mechanics tools, I don't remember how many there were, but they want $800 per mechanic per year. That's a lot of tools if we've already bought them tools to begin with, to need another eight, they're either not taking care of those tools or they're walking away and either way, that's a problem for us. So we need a deeper dive there. On page 288, IT tech fund copier replacements are 2,500 to 4,500, yet they're asking for 32,000. So I think we could decrease that a little bit also. And Denise mentioned another way that she's coming up with efficiencies to help our city and our residents save money, and that was to outsource the utility bill. And that will save substantial money. So I think that we need to definitely decrease because that will definitely decrease the use of the copiers. Also printer replacements, they're using 10K, but they're asking for 15. On page 316, animal license for seniors. I think this is just a discussion we need to have. It's we're giving them a lifetime. They pay 10, eight, eight or $10 for a lifetime. And depending on what age we decide as a senior, I might be one of them. And I just think that's a little too much. And I don't think that serves the purpose of why we even have that permitting process. Because I thought the reason, part of the reason was so we know where the animals are and and I don't think that that, that helps with that. On page 338, I think we should add a nominal fee for people that file to rent for office, maybe 30 bucks or something, to not have them pay anything. I think is silly. And I think it encourages people to sign up thinking, ah, maybe I'll do this. When you don't have to pay anything, it's easy to sign up, but that costs our staff a lot of work. So I think we should add that. On page 340, I support a change in the dumpster program. I do want a neighborhood or area free day once or twice a year. But for me, the use of a single resident for it, I feel a fee is warranted. And also I think we need to look at when, when someone rents the dumpster, I think we need to have a tonnage or a, a weight limit. And if it goes over that, then they have to pay more for that because our tipping fee goes up when, you know, we pay, we pay for tonnage. So if it's going up past what we've thought it should, would be, we need to do something. And then again, I just want to stress again, our RDA monies, we need to use them for the purposes they were intended for, not just have them sitting there. I think this is a great way for us to help attract new business into our city. And so I, I don't know what, what we as a council can do. I don't know how we do it, but we need to do it so that the administrative side hires a dynamic economic director, we get that group going and we use these funds. So overall, I, I think there are some, and I know they're nitpicky, and I hope in the future that, that we don't have the need to go through line by line. But this is a critical year where we have some real issues and unless we make a major change. And for me, I don't know what that is, if that's going to be a tax increase or the transfer. I don't feel like, although this budget is balanced, I don't feel that the mayor really gave us a balanced budget when the way to balance the budget means that we as the council have to increase the money we get in from the residents. So I think that we need to, as the council, decide how we're going to increase those funds. Sure, we can go through and cut some, but I think we need to now have that discussion of how do we do that? So if you would share, allow Denise to share what she's got. And thank you.
Yeah. Would you be okay if we hold that till the end so everybody can go through? I'm sure as Denise starts showing things and modeling, there'll be some conversation about what we'd like to do. Would you be okay if we go through with everyone with their items and then kind of rank the items? And then as we speak to those items, have her add the color at that point?
That's great. Thank you, Chris. I'm happy with that.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock, do you have any that are high priority that you would like put on your priority list?
From my list, I probably, um, well, I do want to cut the 100,000 from the fires, their overtime. But probably my number one priority is to hold public safety harmless.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Next up, councilmember Worthing.
Okay. Start about 30 seconds on the clock. So that's all. I really didn't go into the weeds too much. I did look through everything and I talked to a few of you and got, but I tend to, I stayed more high level based on Corbin and Denise. What?
Alan, we hear you.
No. Anyway, I just say more high level based on, like I said, Corbin and Denise and you know, what they asked is being more high level so they could go back and look at things. I'm just going to start with the neighborhood dumpster. Um, I'm just gonna start with the neighborhood dumpster program. I am for that. I like how it was laid out by Denise originally. Um, we also talked about having um, a free day, maybe twice a year, spring and fall. Um, so I would like to move forward with that. I, I've talked to several neighbors and several people in my district regarding some of these issues. Um, I didn't have anybody that had a problem with paying for a dumpster. Um, I think you all already know, I don't want to see an arts building built either right now. It's just not the time. But I also want to make sure that we're going to be able to fund this thing. I've been told it's going to cost us anywhere about a hundred and fifty thousand to maintain it. Once it's built, we need to make sure that that's going to be taken care of. Um, also with arts and healthy West Jordan and kind of in that um, non-departmental area, I think considering COVID and what has happened and hopefully we keep getting better, but we don't know. I mean, are there going to even be performances this year? Is that even going to be allowed? So I mean, I'd like to look at cutting some of those expenses this year. I know that we've got um, with healthy West Jordan, the Linda Butters is in July. I believe that's already been cut, so taking that out of the budget would make sense. Because we're not going to be doing it. So kind of in the non-departmental area, I'd like to kind of relook at that and see what's really needed for this year coming up with circumstances. Um, the council budget, I know several of us has talked about that, that there is room to cut money out of there. So I think we just need to decide together as a group, what that number is. Overall, office supplies kind of everywhere. I think there should be, you know, I think office supplies can be cut. Uh, travel again, same kind of a situation with COVID. Um, are we really going anywhere? Do we need to go? Are there even going to be conferences to go to? It's, I know it's a shot in the dark, but it's also realistic of what's happening right now. And then on fees, I feel the same way. Um, Denise, you know, I went to the animal shelters, spoke with Dan. From what I understand, they agree that we need to raise those fees. So I'd like to see that. And priorities, really, it's that non-departmental area. I'm just really looking at that and seeing if we need to spend that much money there. I don't think we do. And um, I would say the neighborhood dumpsters would be my other thing is I, I don't want to subsidize a six hundred thousand dollar expense anymore. I mean, that's nice to, it's nice to do that kind of thing when money's free flowing, but seeing it's not, I don't think we should be thinking to subsidize that. That's me. It was very long.
All right. And did all those that were captured as a, are there any others that need to be noted as a priority? Okay. Next up, we'll go with council member pack.
Great. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for all the points of view that have been shared. I received my notice for the hearing and the water bill today. Uh, thank you Denise for for that. And as was mentioned yesterday, thanks so much for all of your time and effort putting all of this together. It's a difficult job working quasi for the mayor, for the council, and it's amazing how someone can be as balanced, left brain, right brain, to understand all the math, but yet explain the math as well. So thank you uh, very much. Denise and I shared a good conversation yesterday um, on the phone. And so a lot of the things that you see twos on there are, are mine as well. Uh, similar to council member Worthing, I, I'm more of a philosophy type guy instead of getting it, well, it, the, the term was into the weeds. Um, I, I don't necessarily mean for that to sound derogatory in the weeds. I know some people on council would like to look at each line item, which is fine.
I love gardening, so weeds are good for me.
For, for me, it's more of a philosophy of how to do this. So it's a little bit difficult to put them on each line. But, but I'll try my best to express that. Well, let's take a couple of instances. There's a healthcare hero type fireworks demonstration that's going to be happening with four of our adjacent cities on Saturday night. Understandably, we're, we're not involved with that, but wondering if we can network with adjacent communities and cities to try to save money in collaboration with each other. Uh, my philosophy is not to micromanage the mayor and his staff, but rather to give direction. For instance, I'm fine right now with using three million dollars of reserve funds, but all of a sudden that jumped to three point two. So I'm not okay with that. I don't want to raise taxes now because we do have reserve funds. I don't want to have people when they don't have more money, have to pay more money. If we have money, great, but understandably, this can't keep happening. But at this point in time, I would prefer not to raise any taxes. Now fees, a, a little bit different because I like to use the analogy of, let's say you have a country club membership, you're paying dues, but then when you use something like you're golfing, you have greens fees. So you pay a little extra because you're using it. So I really appreciate all the arguments on both sides, for instance, of a rental dumpster. If someone is paying for it, I can see that can cause some angst. Hey, don't throw that in my dumpster. I'm paying for that. Um, while at the same time, if we're striving to get more revenue, well, having a dumpster at a sixty six percent subsidized rate versus hiring a private entity, it's still saving the residents money. So that, that's, that's an interesting one there. My philosophy is not to micromanage, but to say, hey, mayor and city staff, that this is what we would like. And basically what I'm seeing that I would like is I go back to our mission statement. I think communities and businesses and families and individuals, if they have a mission statement, it's easier to stay on track. And the prime directive of West Jordan and our mission statement in the general plan is to provide citizens the opportunity to live and enjoy an exceptional quality of life. What does that mean? Well, the specific citizen directives are to leave the city better than we found it, have a profound sense of community, families feel safe, it looks and feels like home, develop and maintain infrastructure and have vibrant economic development jobs. Well, you know, obviously that's hard to do when we have a tax revenue that is lower, but because of that, I use the example of, for instance, yesterday SpaceX was supposed to take off. Now it's, you know, the weather was bad. They're going to do it Saturday. Just because the economic environment is shaky, I feel that we can't put everything on hold or else it does kick the can down the road. We have deferred maintenance and it's actually more expensive in the future to repair things. So we need to have some semblance of having roads and parks and trees. And yes, I feel it would be impropriate to actually build the art center right now, even though I am a staunch proponent of the art center, but I want to make sure that the art center funding does not get taken and used somewhere else. I think that would be a travesty as well. So I think if we can focus i- i- in, instead of line item and short term trying to solve a problem that actually creates longer term, greater issues. If we can focus on an overarching economic development so that we're not just a bedroom community, so we have local jobs, that we have amenities here in the city, that raises property values, which gives us more money. We don't need to do a property tax increase. There's not as much deferred maintenance that costs more. It doesn't kick the can down the road and we can ensure that West Jordan is somewhere that people want to live and work and have businesses here. Whereas if we take this short term vision that short term could last many years, what will then, West Jordan goes down in terms of the, the public perception of being a safe place to live. It doesn't feel like home. There's deferred maintenance on the road and in the parks and in the trees. So I think aesthetics are important. Um, you might have, you might be familiar with studies on where, let's say, even in a, in a shady part of town, a car can be left locked up, nothing gets stolen from it, but once one window gets bashed in, well, then it, it's like a free for all and the tires are gone and, and, and everything, everything's stolen. I, I just want to keep a good sense of place to minimize that deferred maintenance. So it's hard to put all of that down on a spreadsheet. Um, but I'm grateful I was able to speak with Ms. Stack. I've had good a conversation with Chief Wallantine, Chief Maxfield, Brian Clegg. I know that we can't cut too much from being able to repair water lines that already need to be repaired. Or else then it's going to actually cost more money if there's a rupture and there's problems there. So that hopefully that makes sense that I don't want to say line by line, hey, this paper clip shouldn't be bought. I just want us to give a goal to Mayor Burton, uh, mayor, that this is what we'd like to see, definitely public safety of police and fire, that that's a priority. And we want to ensure that we don't go over, well, I know, uh, council member Green said two point six five million. For me, it was the three million that, that that I put down at the beginning. I'm not trying to take a hard line, but I'm not trying to be wishy washy either. I'm just trying to say, let's focus on higher level ideas of long-term planning amid this crisis so that we're not just trying to put out this fire at the expense of creating more fires down the road in, in deferral. Um, so as things come up from other council members, I'm happy to have a up, down, yay, nay, I agree, I disagree. I can certainly make that decision. I've had a lot of emails and conversations with people. I think I know um, what, what residents are, are thinking. I'm trying to stay in touch with them. But at this point in time, for this overview, I, I, I hope that that makes sense on the philosophy and not micromanaging um, the mayor and his staff, but, but giving an overarching directive of how much to spend um, in, in total. Thank you, Chair.
Couple of quick clarifications. That last one, not over three million in reserves, does that mean don't remove more than three million from reserves or have no more than three million in reserves?
Um, thank you for clarifying, meaning that we can use three million. As council member Green was saying, two point six five, I, I, I was fine with three. But now we're at three point two in the budget. Does, does that help, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that, the, the, that it matched. And then are there any of these that need to be flagged as a priority for you?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. The dumpster that I mentioned, uh, the arts center. I think fees for use, I, I don't mean to just say dumpster, I was just using that as an example. So for instance, online thirty nine animal license. Anything that requires a fee, not that I'm pro fee, but I'm saying that we're supposed to, in my mind, give a general level of service to the entire citizenry. And then if a certain citizen wants to do something over and above that, then they, they come with the city to a certain extent. So if, if we're trying to give freebies amid an economic climate where we're using our reserves, I think that if everyone pitches in a little, that makes an aggregate huge difference.
Is that about right? Like fees for the service and that there's inflationary increases because some fees haven't been increased for a very long time.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stack, for trying to extrapolate my ethereal thinking into a line on a Excel spreadsheet.
Doing my best.
All right. Thank you, council member pack.
Thank you, Chair.
Council member Lamb.
Thank you. Um, so about three years ago, I attended a budget meeting similar to this. And Chris, you were there. Um, I don't know that the rest of us were. I think maybe Zach was on the council that time. Um, but you guys spent maybe an hour, maybe two hours cutting five thousand here and two thousand there. And I think over the course of two hours, you maybe cut fifty thousand, maybe sixty thousand dollars. So I, I'd like that we can dig in and say, cut here, cut there, but in essence, we're about two point four million short. And cutting here, there's only going to get us maybe a third of the way, if that. So I, yes, I, I agree. Let's look into those things. Um, but, but let's be honest. We have money that's set aside for something that's not going to be able to be put together right now. And if I have a budget at my house and I have six million dollars sitting on the side, just sitting there, I should probably look at using that. Now I get it, we, we don't want to lose that money and lose the chance of putting, putting together the, the theater when that time comes. I still think the theater is on our mind and it's going to be built eventually. This year is not going to be the year because of what's happening with the pandemic and with uh, everything all over the world. But I, I do think eventually we will build it. But for this year, I don't feel comfortable when last year we asked the public to pay more for water, more for sewer, more for wastewater, and now we're taking that money and putting it back in to the general fund. Um, I would rather you, that we use money that's already in the general fund to cover expenses. And know that we're not saying no to the theater, but we're just saying right now, we need to use that money to cover costs. Um, Denise, um, the mayor, Corbin, you've done a great job. You've cut where we can. I don't think we can cut any more salary where it is, and I don't want to. Um, I will also be against any kind of tax raise this year. This isn't a political thing for me. This isn't about votes. This isn't about anything about the city. This is about, this is not a good year for anybody. And to say that, hey, let's do a tax increase this year, I mean, I get it. It, it's probably something that we need to do, but we just can't do that this year. So I would be a hundred percent against a tax increase. Um, you know, if, if we can look at the, the water sewer and wastewater and, and cut maybe half of that to move over, I might be happy, happier, but moving two point four million basically tells me that last year we didn't need that raisin in any of those. And so it kind of sets a bad example of, uh, and then also to go ahead and, and ask for more raises in those funds, either the end of this year or next year too is going to happen. So the, the utility transfer is my biggest thing. I, I just, I don't feel that it's right to move that over. And I feel that it was a wrong idea to say, hey, you know what we could do? Let's move some of the utility money over to cover the general fund costs. I get it. There, there's many ways that you guys, I'm sure you looked at how it could happen. I don't know how this one even came about. Um, I'm not the mayor nor am I going to run for mayor, but if I was the mayor, I wouldn't have thought about that. I would have shut that right down because I think those money in reserves are for those utilities and should be put towards the costs rather than asking for raises in costs in the coming year or next year. So yeah, I, I would like to look a, and see what we can do. I, I, you know, Chris, I'll have to probably talk to you offline about where that money came from in the first place, you know, six million dollars for the theater. I'm sure it was from funds of, from sale of land or from other things, but I don't want to talk about that right now. Um, but that is really the citizens' money. And when you have the utility fees and say, hey, let's move that instead, that's not fair because you've already got money sitting aside for something that we can't do right now, that we're going to do later. And I believe that's the best way to, to cover the expenses. And, and I think it's a little bit of both. Use, not, not use two point four million from that fund, but maybe one point five million from the fund for this year and then cut up other places. Um, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the reserves. I think the reserves are there for this purpose for this year. I still remember three years ago or four years ago, when it got to twelve million and, and it's just like, why aren't we spending this money? We've already taken it from the citizens. For me, I'm a citizen. So let's use the money for what it's there for, and that's to cover costs and to make sure that we're fulfilled as a city. So I, I would agree with uh, council member pack. I think three million in reserves is about where I would sit. And those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Did I, did I write that right for you? Should six million assist in the budget gap? Should the six million assist in that budget gap?
In which, in which budget gap?
Like in the, you know how we have the two point four coming in from the utility transfer? You want to say, I don't like the utility transfer. We have six million dollars in the building capital fund that can come back into the general fund and fill the budget gap. Okay, so I make sure I represented you right. Thanks.
And this is in no way saying I don't want to build the theater, but this is saying for now.
It's possible.
We have budget that's set aside for something that we can't do and we can't afford to pay for it. I, I say, okay, we can't afford to pay for the maintenance of it right now. Um, I think it's something that we could look at later on down the road. There, I mean, previous councils found that money somehow and were able to save the money. So I think whether it's us next year or in two years, we'll be able to find ways to to fund that, that building because nobody on our council doesn't want. I know the, I know the mayor wants it as well. So we, we all want it. It's just timing is bad and no one predicted. I mean, I don't think anybody in the city, even the theater uh, people predicted that COVID nineteen would do what it's done to the whole world. So, thank you.
All right. Are there any others that need to be flagged as priority for you?
Figure out, wait till the second you take a drink.
I had to drink. I was thirsty. Uh, no, I, I think what I said is good. I mean, as far as priorities go, but I, I think the, both Denise and Corbin have done an excellent job in getting us where we are. My biggest worry is just two point four million from, from the utility funds that I don't think should be moved.
Hey, beautiful. I understand council member Jacob's going to be joining us soon, but I don't believe he's, oh, there he is.
I'm here.
Council member Jacob, would you like to, uh, did you, did you catch the overview of what we're doing or do I need to catch up real quick?
Um, just, I, I think I got the idea. We're talking about just our ideas, uh, what we're comfortable with, what we're not comfortable with as far as those uh, specifics, if you want them, or general uh, philosophies, more like Chad just said. general philosophies, more like Chad just said.
This is the high level, everybody gets a few minutes to throw out all of the ideas that are important to them, kind of like putting the post-it notes up on the whiteboard. And then once we've got everything full, everybody shared their stuff, we're going to go through one by one and see how many people want to discuss this, 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 this. Then we'll sort, and then we'll have our list of items to address and work through.
Understood, okay.
The floor is yours to start throwing out ideas.
Okay, I will be in and out tonight, just as I have time to jump in and jump out. I've just got a full plate this evening, so I will participate as much as I can, but I am here now, so let me throw out some post-it notes. Number one is I am okay with an inflationary-esque tax increase, something in the 2% to 4% range. I would be okay with that. Put me in a pickle when I was trying to decide how to answer that question on the survey because I think it was 1 to 3 and 4 to 6 were the options, and I was like, well, neither, both, I don't know, in between. So 2% to 4% is something I would be comfortable with. Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but the transfer out of utilities into general fund is more of a policy decision than it is a stopgap measure, if I'm not mistaken, in that when we charge, like talking mountain power for servicing their power poles or whatever it is, recharge them and impact that will go into the general fund for their use of roads and easements and other things that come out of the general fund. Is that right?
You are correct, and you are correct in that it is a, it was not intended to be a one-time budget gap filler, it was intended to change policy.
Okay, so, so just to make sure I understand that. So if we are transferring money out of, say, the water fund into the general fund as a policy, it is set to be a fixed percentage, let's just say, policy-wise, already fixed dollar amount, or whatever it might be, where we decide on, to cover the water department's use of general fund infrastructure.
Yes.
For example, when they dig up a sidewalk to replace a valve somewhere and then they replace the sidewalk, that money comes out of the general fund, so water fund puts it back, or whatever it might be. Just, that may be a bad example, but that's kind of the idea, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with raising rates 5% to cover the transfer into the general fund. I think it's, I think it's a little bit much. I'm comfortable with the policy idea behind it. I want to make sure that we are upfront and clear about exactly why and how that's a thing, because, you know, Sandy was in the news a couple of years ago for sneaking tax increases into their water bill so they didn't have to do truth in taxation. You know, just transferring more and more and more money out of the one and the other. Excuse me. So I want to make sure that we are clear in our messaging that that is not what's going on here, that there is a justification for it. I'm comfortable with about half of that. So instead of 5%, 2.5%, I think is something that I'm more comfortable with. Fees, of course, I'm in favor of looking at adjusting fees, especially fees for services that haven't been adjusted in a long time, as the cost of providing those services have gone up. Definitely, that's, that's a revenue source I'm definitely willing to look at. I had one other that I was trying to think of. Oh, and as far as general, oh, no. Another one I'm willing to maybe look at is taking a slightly less pessimistic look at the sales tax revenue. We're projecting a 15% decline, I would be willing to look at a 12% or 11% or 10% decline, just because other cities are. Not every city is landing at 15%, other cities are landing at 2%. So not saying that it's right or wrong, or that, you know, they're going to be hurting at the end of the year because they're going to be wrong. I'm just saying, as far as forecasting goes and budgeting goes, I'd be willing to play with that number just a little bit, instead of making that a hard and fast number that now we've got to play with all the other numbers in order to meet that deficit. I'm willing to tweak that number a little bit as well. The budget meeting that Chad referred to three years ago, I think ended with Mayor Rolfe saying, okay, now we need another million dollars, let's just assume we're going to get a million dollars more in sales tax, we'll be good. Ding, and we were done. Wasn't the best answer, but I think we hit the number, so he wasn't wrong. So anyway, that's, that's one other thing I was, I was willing to work at. And then rainy day funds, I'm fine using rainy day funds because this is a rainy day, even though it's 88 degrees outside.
Zach, do you have a limit as to what, how much rainy day funds that you have a tolerance for using?
We need to stay above the minimum threshold that the state mandates.
Okay, thank you.
So Zach, can I chime in and ask you a question on that? So are you saying then your preference would be to reduce the utility transfer by 2.5% and make up for that by using more rainy day funds than what's proposed? Is that the trade-off of proposing?
That would be part of it. I also mentioned fees, I mentioned property tax of 2% to 4%, and I also mentioned sales tax declining by maybe, you know, instead of 15%, maybe it's 14%. And so we recoup, you know, we find some of the numbers there.
Okay.
I did list all of those, Zach. Were there, Councilman Jacob, I'm sorry, do you have?
That's fine, I'm Zach to my friends and to my finance people.
Oh, good. Do you have any of those that you would like to mark as a priority?
Not really one over the other, probably the lesser priority would be the fee increases. I don't think that there's a ton of money waiting there.
Yeah.
So that would be less of a priority for me. More of a priority would probably be the inflationary sales or the inflationary property tax. And you won't catch me talking about property tax increases very often. It's not something I'm a big fan of, but I think an inflationary rate, I should be careful always saying this because of how property tax works, but an inflationary adjustment to keep our rate roughly the same going forward, right around that 2 mil level that we're at now, or have been at for last year or two. I would like to see us implement a policy saying, you know what, our, our property tax rate is going to be 2 mil. Now, if that requires truth in taxation this year, then let's do it. I would like to see us policy-wise go in that direction. So there, there you have that.
I have, I have seen that policy, so I'm aware of a policy that's, that's used in some other cities somewhere to that, where you just set the rate and float with, with values.
Yeah, that we were not beholden to the county and the county assessor's estimation of what our property values are worth to give us our rate. We decide what our rate is, and then we play the game as it needs to be played in order to set our own rate. And with that, I yield the balance of my time.
All right. Thank you very much. If you do need to come and go, just be sure that you shoot a quick text to both myself and Alan so that we're aware and can notate times.
Roger, will do, thanks.
Okay, so my items, number one, I'd like to talk about the utility transfer. I know that's come up with others, you can just add one more next to it, or we can hit that as we go through the list. Actually, skip it because when we go through, we'll just tally up the count of how many want to discuss and just hit it there. So utility transfers on the list, Highlands area is on the list, dumpster, sounds like there's some preconceptions on that one. I'd like to discuss or some ideas on there. I'm not suggesting continuing the program the way it is right now, but we'll, we'll talk about that one with details. The city website, there's a huge price tag with that one, I want to talk about that one. I wouldn't say that's a priority, but, or like, like a must-have top priority for me, but definitely something. And then council contingency, this is something that had come up in conversation earlier, so I'd like to discuss that. I think, I think we need to make sure that we, we have one, there've been the thoughts thrown out of perhaps reducing that, so I just wanted to share some thoughts on it when we get there. My utility billing was similar. I'd like to see us find out if we can either find some savings by taking billing services online and giving the people the option to have just the electronic bill rather than having to mail stuff out. That's kind of a policy that would be impacted by budget, so I'd like to discuss that. Memberships have been brought up. My thing was focusing on memberships that are either have a professional requirement to maintain them, or they have a known ROI. I think memberships is open enough here to where I can just add myself to the agree on that one. And then, I can't remember if I already said Highlands Park area. I think that's already on the list anyway. But then the last one is property tax adjustment rather than the utility transfer, and that's kind of like the two separate things, but they're kind of combined, so we'll, we'll hit on those. So I think most of mine have really already been hit on here. So with that being said, before we go through and count up how many items each person, let me back up. What we'll do now is we'll go through this list of 60 or so items and just get a count of how many people want to spend some time. Again, this doesn't necessarily have to be in tonight's meeting. We do have other nights where it can be discussed, but we'll see how many want to have a conversation about each one of these items. If it seems like all are in agreement and we don't have to have much of a conversation and we can quickly give instruction to Denise and move on, great, we'll just do that. But we'll get a count of how many want to speak to each item. If we have enough, like I said previously, if there are at least three that want to speak to it, we'll, we'll go ahead and have that conversation. Or if there are two that feel strongly, or if one wants to make this a priority, basically if this is something you feel strongly about, we'll have the conversation. Before we go through and start tallying these up line by line, does anybody have anything else that comes to mind that you want to add to the list?
I don't have anything to add, Chris, that I, I would kind of like to hear Denise's thoughts before we, before we go line item. Your thoughts on that?
On what I present, what I prepared for you, Councilmember?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, were the things she's going to present specific to, specific to individual items or was a higher level than what we have here?
It's specific to a comparison of the utility transfer and comparing it kind of to a property tax increase. So Councilmember Whitelock asked me to prepare a study of a current water rate based on the average residential usage, and then if there were no transfer proposed, what would their bill look like? And if there was the transfer as proposed by the, the proposed budget or the tentative budget, what that looks like? And then compare it to if a resident were to use that same value and have a property tax increase. So she asked me to weigh the two against each other. So it could be some good information for the council to begin their discussions.
Yeah, so it sounds like that ties, ties in, I mean, kind of like the, the property tax increase and the utility fee, like, like it's with those two items. So before we do that, if you're okay, I'd still like to go through and get the count for each item before we start focusing on specifics, if that, if that makes sense, Councilmember Whitelock. I mean, if you feel strongly, we can, we can change.
It does, but I feel like, for me, it kind of helps with some of those items.
Okay, how long will it take?
So.
It will take five minutes.
All right, go for it.
Okay, I will stop sharing this one and start sharing something else.
And just a quick side note, for those who are, who are participating, I know we've got a couple of comments that have come through, come in through the chat. Since we don't have any citizen comment time scheduled for this evening, we're not, we won't necessarily be responding to the comments that come through, come in through the chat. Just wanted to give you a quick heads up there. We do thank you for being here and participating. You're definitely welcome to share comments to the email address, councilcomments@westjordanutah.gov, so they can be sure to hit, so they can be sure to go to all council members, but just wanted to make you aware.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, does that mean, would you prefer that we do not respond to those comments if they're coming in on chat, just to, just as a protocol?
I'll just be super, super quick in this. The idea behind, the council rules and procedures at one point in time said that we're just, we shouldn't be receiving text messages from folks who are in the meeting because outside of citizen comments, if somebody's sending you a text message, it potentially gives one person greater ability to communicate and have impact with that voting council member than the rest of the public during citizen comment. So to try and keep everybody on a fair playing field, we said citizens should only be commenting during the citizen comment time. Now, we're in a weird environment right now, so there is a chat functionality within the tool here, but only those who are in the Zoom can watch, those who are watching later can't, those who are watching on YouTube can't. So while I won't say, no, don't do it, that's why I wanted to make sure that it was known that we're not going to actively take that as if it were citizen comment. So if somebody does want to make sure that their comments are formally recognized, the channel for that would be the email. So hopefully that helps with the philosophy rather than a direct yes or no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I just add that I think if council member, if council members start responding, that's tantamount to a public hearing, and this was not really advertised as a public hearing, and I also believe that your comment is spot-on, not just from a fairness perspective, but I think that if some were allowed to comment and then responses were given back and others weren't, you would run afoul of the Open Meetings Act.
Rob, question. Doesn't, doesn't Open Meetings Act also prohibit electronic communications between members of the body?
Between the body while you are in session. That's correct.
So, so we cannot, we should not be texting each other or communicating with each other by any other way than what we're doing in the meeting openly?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so we don't have any problems.
All right, quick, quick pause on that. So like as Mr. Anderson and I are going back and forth, or if Councilmember Jacob has to leave, does that mean he shouldn't be texting me to say, hey, I'm not going to be here? Or if?
Yes, he should, he should verbally tell you he's got to leave.
And if you have internet issues and you need to join and let Chris know that we need to, yeah, exactly, lean over to whisper, I'm sorry, let's not get caught up on like archaic rules right now, let's talk about budget.
It's up to you, I'm just telling you what the Open Meeting Act provides.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will now go back over to Denise.
Hey, can everyone see the screen that I shared? PDF, okay. So this is a financial analysis that Councilmember Whitelock asked me to do for her. I have not shared it with her, so this is the first time she's seen it as well. So what we did was, if you remember, when we did the water rate study, we used actual use for all the residents and businesses between October of 2018 and September 2019, and that's how you actually adjusted all of the water rates. You didn't raise water rate revenue as a whole, but you redistributed it based on water use and the type of user. So the first column at the top here that says current, that is what under our current structure, because we have not changed the rates yet, they will go into effect on October 1st, if you adopt them under this budget. On that current column would be if someone used 5,000 gallons a month in the wintertime, which is actually a lot. In fact, one of the council members I saw today said they had, they used 3,000 most months. And 22,000 between May and October during the summer, this would be their bill, they would have $119.89 a month as an average. If we did not do the transfer, so as you know, the mayor proposed three rate increases, or I'm sorry, four rating, three rate increases. He did not propose any change to the water rate. He proposed a change to the sewer, storm, solid waste and stormwater. One was 15, 8, and 5%. If we took those down 5%, those rate increases that were proposed and moved them 5% down, the no, the no transfer column would be what the resident would pay. So there would be like a $4.15 or 12 cents. If what the mayor's proposal is here with those rate increases is where that same user would be under this new rate structure. So the next section is kind of a brown color or a dark, I don't know, okra. So that proposed bill at $118.20 compared to the no transfer bill at $115.77, the difference between- The difference between those two is $2.43 a month. Over 12 months, the real actual financial impact to the residential user of that transfer is a yearly cost of $29.16. All right, the blue section that is right here, I did not use red and green, Councilmember McConaughey. The blue section right here is how much an average resident pays in property tax to the city. I just got the new value of 335,700 is what Salt Lake County's provided us as the average residential value this year. We discount that to 55% of the value, which brings it to 184,635. We apply our property tax rate, which is almost two mils, and they pay $350.99 or about 97 cents a day for all of the services that the city provides to them. If you take the amount of property tax paid and the amount that is the financial impact of the transfer and apply it, instead of doing a transfer, but instead do a property tax increase, then the increase would be 8.31% to a resident. Okay? If you apply that same 8.31% to our total property tax, we would not be able to fill that gap. This illustrates to you the real difference between how tax exempt properties would contribute if they, under the transfer philosophy, and also that the largest water users, which are not your residents, they tend to be businesses, would be contributing more under that scenario than they would be if you were to do a property tax increase of that same exact percentage or the same financial impact to a resident. The amount of the utility transfer is 2.479 million, and it would require for dollar for dollar to get to a property tax increase to bring in that same amount would require a 15.75% increase.
Thank you, Denise.
All, that's pretty well. That was, I will be happy to email that to everyone so that they can kind of look at the logic there. And again, it was interesting, it wasn't something I thought of. So it was nice for me to be able to take a different look at this as well and make sure that that what we had recommended as a utility transfer policy was in the best interest of a resident versus overall for the city. But. Okay, so let's go back to the sharing of the survey results. This one, did I get you the right place?
There we go.
Okay, yes.
All right, so to kind of speed things along, I'd like to see if the council can do, there should be nonverbal feedback options for everybody except myself. So if you see, if you have the participant screen up, you should see the option to do like a thumbs up or a little checkbox for yes. Could all the members of the council hit that if you're able to see that?
Where do we see that?
Yeah, where are we looking?
So if your screen, if the Zoom is taking up full screen, your whole monitor, you won't see it yet. So what you'll need to do is mouse over the top of the screen, you'll get the little zoom bar. And then when that comes up, you'll see where it says exit full screen mode. Click on that to exit full screen mode. It should pop everything into a window. With the window, if you're still only seeing Denise's screen, mouse to the top of that window, and then you'll be able to see a section that says participant. Click on that. And then you should see at the bottom of that participants, those little icons.
I think you're above my pay grade.
Phone and none of that applies.
I don't see the participant portion.
It could also be along the bottom and you click on it and it pops up a pop-up box.
Where it says participants?
Yep.
Yep.
You click on that, they should have a pop-up box, and then there's three little dots on the right after invite, mute me. There's three boxes, or three little dots. Yep.
Got it, found it on the phone.
Beautiful. Can everybody hit that, just so I can, just I can see it here? Is my hand raised? Is that Kelvin Chad? Melissa?
I'm hitting the button, there we go.
Chad, do you have yours?
Yep.
Kayleen, did you get yours?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, can you hit it again? And then David, did you get yours?
Can I consistently make it work?
I have my hand up.
Okay. Beautiful.
Couldn't you just visually see us raise our hands?
Yeah, right?
I can only see so many at a time, so without bouncing back and forth.
How do I get it so it's not in the middle of my screen? Can I move it?
Should be able to take and drag it off to the side.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll try this and see if this works. We'll start off with Kelvin's, the fees for service inflationary increase. How many want to discuss this one?
Now, when you say discuss, which side of the coin are we on? Are we on the mostly agreeing, yes, we should just do it, or on the? Okay.
Let's have a conversation, let's take time in, let's take time in one of our meetings. This, well, this is right at the top of the list, so probably this meeting tonight to talk about this. All right, so we've got, looks like. Do we have? If you could, if you hit the little button, please leave it up. And then I'll go through and I'll lower the hands for you, so it looks like we've got four, five for this. All right, so five for the fees for service. Okay, so next item, Denise, do you want to read off what the items are? And then I'll play with the hands, that might speed it up a bit.
The next item is supporting the free, not fee, free neighborhood dumpster program, and the fee is warranted as it's presented in the budget.
Okay, so we've got two on that.
Well, I raised my hand, but it sometimes doesn't, doesn't, there we go. Sorry, Chris.
Three?
Yeah. Okay, so we've got three there, so. Next.
Outside committees, so that would be Healthy West Jordan and the Arts Council and anyone else that's in the non-departmental section?
Okay, so we've got four.
Okay. No decrease to public safety.
Hold on just a second, okay, now go for it.
No decrease to public safety.
Got five? Give me just a second to reset those. Okay.
This one's going to be an interesting dynamic, so I think what we want to do first is say, I want you to do a thumbs up if you say no more than 2.65 million. Or you're going to do a thumbs up for no more than 3 million.
Just a sec. So the 2.65, we had one that went away, but it was quick and I didn't catch.
So.
No more than 2.65. Okay, so we've got one there.
Okay. Tolerance for reserves is no more than 3 million.
We have three.
And then there's another reserve, one I think that Councilmember Lamb had that said.
Jacob.
Was it Jacob? Reserve should be used up to the 5% minimum.
But that's not quite stated right, that's a, well, could be, not should be, yes.
How's that could?
Trying to raise.
All right, so Kayleen, you said count two on that one? Reserve can be used up to the 5%?
Yes.
Okay.
Next one is to allow a free first dumpster rental.
Yeah, well.
Well, what do you want to do with that, Chris?
I want to discuss the dumpster rental program and the fees associated with it.
Okay, I think we've got enough people between the other one and this one to do that.
I was gonna say that.
The fee for service?
Yeah, and this one's got priority listed twice, so it'll be discussed, it's just a matter of.
I would just merge it with the other.
Yeah, just merge it.
So delete, yeah, delete that one in, yep, there we go. And then just change that to dumpster program and then add, bump that up to five. All right.
Overtime, cut $100,000 and do a budget amendment if the overtime is needed in the fire department.
And. I was gonna say, just a quick note, this doesn't necessarily say, let's just take that action, that means let's discuss this action.
Right, and my hand is raising, you just can't see it.
Okay.
Just raise your hand. Want you have one?
I do.
Well, and we have a couple of overtime.
So I'm just gonna say overtime.
Yep.
Okay, so overtime in general.
Yeah, because there were a couple other budgets that had some high overtime too.
Okay, so is that just two for overtime?
Do you have mine?
Clarification is police overtime included in this?
Overtime in general. Okay, perfect.
How many?
Three. I think Kayleen, some of the confusion may be that I'm trying to hit the lower button to draw people's hands after, so I can make sure I've got it counted, and then I'll hit the button to lower it, so that's where it should be disappearing.
Okay, the construction of the art center or how to use those reserves?
And Mr. Chair, since this is the one I brought up, I'm not sure if that, the way that it's listed accurately expresses it. As Councilmember Lamb said, well, basically, it's just to keep the art funding in place, because if we use it now, then it's gone. Let's use the savings first, since we have 3 million in reserve funds, that's not specifically allocated for the arts building.
It's just agreed to discuss it.
Right, I don't know if that makes sense.
The three items, the three items would be combined into one.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Discuss funding for the art center, art center funding.
Yeah, exactly.
So with that said, how many? I'm seeing three.
Let me get my hand there.
Five. Okay, next.
So that has a five and a five.
10.
Is that considered a super majority?
Okay, the utility transfer.
I would change this and just say utility transfer in general, not necessarily for or against, but for additional discussion.
Yeah, I think we all need to, we all want to discuss that one.
So I'm seeing three, four.
Well, in general, I mean, are we just saying utility, because I think it's broader than that, right? Because don't use a fee for something somewhere else unless it's absolutely necessary, or are we just limiting it to the utility transfer?
This would be specific to the proposed utility transfer, saying this is coming from the enterprise funds going to the general. So like other fees like pet license, that's something separate.
Okay.
So I'm seeing four that want to discuss this one.
Okay, property tax increase.
Saying one. I think this kind of goes along with the other where, and kind of what Councilmember Whitelock was sharing, the comparison. So I think this will inevitably come up in the conversation with the utility transfer. I know it doesn't let me, but I'd like to count my name on that one too, so let's put two for discussion of property tax increase. And it's kind of the same as this one.
Okay, I think the next.
Affirmative or contrary?
Right, I think this next one really just needs to be reduction of expenditures, because. Or do you want to?
No, I would agree with that, Denise, office supplies, travel, training, memberships. I think that's all. And honestly, you know, we'll have that discussion later, but it's probably not a specific line by line, but it'll be percentage or something that if we.
Similar to 22, cost reduction operations?
Yes.
Yes. Well, and that's the same as 19 and 20.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah. If the one proposing wants to consolidate, that's fine, I just want to make sure that if somebody else has a specific, we're not removing others.
Three, those three for me make sense in just overall cost reductions.
Well, Kayleen has a long list of things that you may want to talk about.
And I agree with most of them, by the way, so.
Okay.
So is that a five? We don't know.
I'm seeing none, so cost reduction in operations, how many would like to discuss that?
Hold on.
Okay, there's four. All right, four.
Four, including you, or no?
No, I'm trying to leave myself out on this one, just so everybody can see the numbers, but the ones I feel a little strongly about, I'll voice that separate, but.
Um, the Highlands study. The Highlands SAA.
We've got three, four. Four on that one to discuss Highlands.
I think this one's more economic development. So hiring an economic development director, RDA funds need to be spent on economic development.
Spend more money.
And I don't know, like, I don't know if that's something we need to discuss, or if that, I don't know how we tell administration other than I have a feeling they're listening, which is good, that that needs to be done. So I don't know that we need to spend time on it, it's just.
So maybe some of these really aren't budget per se, they're more about policy level decisions, and maybe they can be done after you've got this budget in a place like the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, like outsourcing versus in-sourcing or regular RFPs. Those are all policy decisions, and those are great things for the council to discuss and put to best practices.
Some of them though, like that Economic Development Director, I mean, that's a policy decision that's expressed through the budget. So if there is a position in the budget for that, there's a salary budgeted, that's kind of where we say, we're expecting these funds to be spent. So if we need to look at the RDA, I mean, if there are specific ways that we could say, this is how we expect that money to be budgeted and spent. If not, if we're not ready for that, then it becomes the, okay, well, let's have a conversation about what we put in the budget. So I think if the combination of that makes sense, so.
All right.
Economic development, where did that, who did that one come from?
That was Kayleen with the Higher Economic Development.
So Row 24.
23 and 24, but we, like I said, do we want to put it in here as this, or is this more?
Since it could be reflected in the, or the Economic Development Director is something called out specifically in the budget. So I guess I would ask specifically on that, do we want to have a conversation about that?
Well, it is budgeted for in here, so I think we're fine here. I guess I'm just asking, I think in the future, we need to, you know, and maybe it's just a conversation I have with administration, but I just think it's important that we keep an eye on that, that it's being used for what it's meant to be for.
Okay.
So we don't need to discuss it.
Okay, so that's.
Well, and I would agree, Denise, that the uniform policy, the Cemetery Perpetual Fund, the outsourcing and regular RFPs to ensure cost savings, that's not going to affect this budget. If it does, it's going to be mid-year budget corrections, and so I'm okay if those are just put someplace on a parking lot list that we, you know, we talk about in the future, particularly when we have maybe some better data.
So all of these things that I'm coloring in yellow all are about cutting. So all of these things that I'm coloring in yellow all are about cutting specific expenses, which has already been addressed above.
Um, except for row thirty-seven. Concerned about cuts.
That's the public safety one, that's the public safety one. So do I have it up here yet? We don't have it up here yet.
Nope, haven't got to that one yet.
Where did it go?
Did we already remove, and I haven't gone through the entire budget with an entire, fine tooth comb, did we already remove the Parks Master Plan Consultant that was discussed last night?
It was on, Zach, that was in an unfunded list, so it's not actually.
Okay, perfect, thanks. That's what I needed.
This we've already done.
All right, so let's.
Council contingency and website.
Let's scroll up just a little bit if we could. So of those, I, I just wanna make sure everyone has a chance to, to make sure if there's an item that they'd like to discuss specifically, we can. Can you go up a little bit further? Where did we drop off on those? All right, so Councilmember Green, office supplies, travel, memberships.
That's all, that's all part of the normal cost, that some of the cost reductions. So I'm okay with not having those in the list, cuz we're gonna talk about them.
Okay. And then balanced long-term consequences with short-term solutions.
I think that's probably a long-term thing, just as we, just to keep in mind. I don't think that's a discussion.
So Councilmember Whitelock, the next two are yours. Do they need to be voted on for? Do they, are those ones you want considered for discussion with the budget conversation?
Which?
Row twenty-three and twenty-four.
No, I think those, I think those are just, it, it's in the, it's in the budget, it's funded. We just need to make sure that it occurs.
All right, now Councilmember Green, yours were twenty-five through twenty-eight.
Like I said, I think those are more for, I, I don't think we can affect this budget year with those discussions, but it's something that we need to take a look at to, for long-term issues, uh, to, just to, to keep things in check.
So one of them could potentially be an issue for the budget, the outsourcing versus in-house. I think the one that was specifically brought up was paying folks from outside agencies to come do the park strip maintenance. So that would be one where we could potentially adjust the funding for those outside services if you wanted to address it through the budget, or we can, we can put on hold.
I'm fine with that waiting. And I think actually I would suggest that these, these items be noted and given to our budget committee for them to work with Mrs. Stack and bring us back to the body.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so on this, what's visible on the screen right now, we've got quite a bit from Councilmember Green, Councilmember Whitelock. Are there any items that are on the screen that you want brought up for discussion?
At some point, Chris, I, I was at the meeting where you controlled your Excel spreadsheet that Chad referenced, and I thought that was a good activity. Are we going to do a similar activity where we can go through and, and cut these things if we decide as a body that we like the idea of getting rid of it?
Yeah, absolutely, to see what impact it has and kind of model it out. Yeah.
Yeah, I, so if we're gonna, if we can do that, I'd be happy to just move that to a future time.
Okay, that was painful. I think that was something like sixteen hours that went into translating the budget document from a PDF into Excel, and that was, that was not fun to prep for.
Denise, Denise has.
Denise is. This was before your time.
I will tell you that Denise has got some great spreadsheets that, for example, um, she's got it broken down where she can tell you what the costs were on office supplies with the fiscal year that ended in two thousand nineteen and what we're budgeting and what the difference is. So on some of these things, when we're talking about office supplies and building and grounds, her spreadsheet will get at that very quickly unless I'm throwing, unless I'm totally mistaken at what I saw Denise.
No, you're right, and I sent that to council. You all received that data. It's got five years of actuals, five years of budget, and then what your proposed budget is.
I just feel like in this budget year that we do need to go through, even, even if you feel like it's the weeds, this is one of our main jobs, and I feel we need to look at these weeds and ensure that some of them might need to be taken out. We asked them to do it before, and when I look at the different departments, I think fire truly did go through and do a zero-based budgeting. I'm not sure everybody did, and so I think that this is our time that we need to go through and say, we're not comfortable spending that much on that area.
And you know what, Kayleen, I, I agree with you on some of these, on some of these that, uh, while it may be in the weeds, we have to come up with a, the, the easiest way I'm going to, 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 to put this is we've gotta come up with a short-term fix to, for a long-term solution. And, uh, we, we're, we're talking about property, I mean philosophically, we're talking about some tax or fee increases. We've got it, we've gotta cut or be as tight as we can and look at some of these. So I, I do wanna look at some of these individually. I don't know how to do that, but I agree with you that getting in the weeds is, weeds is not necessarily bad, particularly in this budget year.
So what if we do this? What if we make, yeah, another sheet, and we call that sheet weeds? And we move all these specific items to the weed sheet, and that will be kind of the last.
Let's call it the weed sheet.
Weeds, plural, not weed singular.
You said weed sheet.
I said weed. There, there was an S on there.
Councilmember Worthen, you're the first one that brought up weed tonight.
Just saying. See, we do.
I wish I could see Chief Wonton's face right now.
But yeah.
Should be forty dollars and twenty cents.
So.
Probably not a bad idea, cuz if we can come up with a few, uh,
So.
Even a couple hundred thousands are, we're good.
Well, and if I might chime in, if we could balance that, cuz I don't disagree, but if we could balance it by saying, hey, we don't wanna go over X amount of dollars, and we don't wanna reduce this and that, like, let's maybe say, public service or whatever it is, mayor, come back to us with that, too. I, I wanna make sure that it's not so micromanaged that, that, you know, we, we don't have a philosophy of stating, hey, that this is the budget we're looking for. We, we want you to have some autonomy in figuring out with your directors where that could be, well, collaborative.
I, I agree with the fact, so I, I, and the administration may not like this, this comment. I agree with the fact that, well, cuz, cuz when, when Denise and I were going through the budget, I was going through a bunch of line-by-lines, and I realized that there was a recurring theme of office supplies and uniforms and professionals. There, there was this recurring theme of each line that was, and it's like, okay, let's, let's look at those across the board. But I have to tell you that, uh, the, and this will sound mean, but it's our budget now. Yes, the administration can help, and yes, they can do that, but whatever policy we set, and I don't wanna take a hostile tone, but if there are things that are out of line with the budget, it's our job to fix them, not send this, and, and if staff wants to go back and say, hey, we've, we've come up with a couple of ideas to help you with amend the budget, uh, based on some of the things we're talking about, I'm okay with that, but at the end of the day, right now, we're responsible for the budget, and I am not gonna push this back and say, hey, staff, go back and fix this and, and come back. We can talk about it, and, and so that's probably a philosophical thing that at some point in time, the budget does belong to us, and we're going to be responsible for the budget. I wanna work with the administration, don't get me wrong. But at some point in time, if we think that something's too high, it's our call, and, and, and I agree with you, it, it may not be a specific line item, it may be a specific class of line items or one across the board, and we can say, hey, reduce this number by X amount, but I think it still is worthwhile in talking about because some of this is, I, I'm not gonna deflect our job, uh, that, because we've taken it and it's now ours. Uh, under the old form of government, maybe, but on the new one, uh, yeah, we've got, we've got some responsibilities we've gotta deal with, so that's just my comment.
So the items that we moved to the tab for weeds, my thought is we have the budget committee review those and go through those, and then as we, as a council, we'll take the higher level items or the policy level discussion items. And then the last thing on that list will be revisiting those in the weeds.
Hey Denise, why don't you make a tab that says, uh, policy, and any of those other things that are on there and policy, like my several or future policy, let's just make a tab and move those over so that we haven't lost them, um, but we know that we can give them to the budget committee or something else and do that. Just a thought.
Chris, on my page forty-seven-one, though, I, I don't want that lumped in with things. I want.
And let's pull it out.
Which ones?
That one I'd like to have a separate discussion on. It, it's Denise. And I just wanna know, do we have support to do, do we have authority? I guess, should figure that one out.
It's our budget, we can decide what we, what elements we'll pay for and what we won't, so, yes.
If we remove her salary, she'll leave.
All right, so, so back to the voting on this one. How many want to discuss the vehicle allowances?
Well. I want, what I want discussed is, do we want to adjust it so that it's in her salary, so her retirement gets counted for that?
Yeah, and, and I think it's a broader conversation than just one person. We'll, we'll need to look at it in a larger context of where's there an allowance, where do we need to adjust, so it's, it's broader, but yeah.
Denise isn't gonna chime in, but I'll chime in on this. Council, you'll set the budget for personnel. The actual salary and the location on the step, stepping grade within that budget is determined by me and, or by the mayor. I hear you, I get the message. We right now give a vehicle allowance to each of the department heads, uh, including Denise, that's part of the compensation package. But if you feel like her salary isn't high enough, let us know, let me know. If you feel like that's true of any department head, let me know. You set the budget, uh, but then the actual execution of the salary comes through administration.
Unfortunately, property tax revenues and other revenues are not high enough to, to make Denise's salary what it really deserves to be.
Okay, you guys, stop with the Denise thing.
So, yeah, and.
Mayor will give you ten percent of his. I should not be in this conversation. This is awkward.
But, but that's where the policy level, when we have the discussion, we could say, do we wanna continue the policy of vehicle allowance for every department head? Or would we, as a policy, say, roll that into salary, and we'll only do that for those that definitely require travel?
Okay.
Is that, is that an accurate statement, Corbin?
Right, the pol, you can set, um, yeah, you can set policy through the budget that, you can say.
Yeah.
Your vehicle allowance line items, or we're gonna roll those vehicle line items into salaries. Yes, you can do that.
I'm, I'm not sure if Councilmember Jacob was here, but a number of years ago, we had issues with, um, we were recovering from, from two thousand eight and everything that happened there, and there had been a freeze on promotions and stepping grade. And in an effort to make up, the policy decision was, we're going to set aside a certain amount of funding that could be used to be applied to get people back in the proper place where they needed to be. So we used the, the budget to execute a policy decision from the council, and then the, the administration was relied upon to execute that. So I'm seeing this as something that would be similar, so. It seems like there's support for the conversation with, uh, I, I see two hands raised. Are there any others that would wanna have a conversation about that policy?
Oh, whoops, I was one that had to.
You're already there.
It would be cautious making those kinds of policies in the vacuum. Um, most pretty, a vehicle, for example, vehicle allowance for department heads is a, uh, department head level or above is pretty standard in the comp package, especially for larger cities in Utah. If you strip that out, you'll have to probably make up that much more on the salary side, so there's some trade-offs.
And that's what's being said, but, but, but again, this isn't, should we do it yes or no? It's, should we talk about this?
Yeah.
So there were at least two. I'll throw my hat in the ring on this one, so that we have three saying yes. Let's, let's discuss this. All right. What is the next one?
No cuts to public safe, well, not no cuts. She was concerned about the cuts to public safety.
How many would like to spend some time reviewing those cuts and making sure you're comfortable with them?
Well, we have a public safety one up above. The no decrease to public safety.
So.
Yeah, it's already up there in five.
Whitelock, is that represent, cuz I know when you talked to me, you were saying, I'm concerned about the cuts that were already made, but you're just saying, don't cut anymore.
Well, I am concerned about the cuts that were made. I'm concerned that we got rid of some positions that that I think are problematic for the long term.
So is this a conversation that you think needs to be separate from what's on row six or something?
I can, I can bring it up in row six. When we discuss it in there, I can bring it there. I'm fine with that.
Cool. Next one, network with other cities to provide more collaborative events. Zach, I didn't quite catch the handle. Was that for this one or for the prior?
And ju- just to clarify, it was.
That was for the prior.
Yeah, it was just a brainstorming issue that I mentioned, just anything that we can network with to potentially save some money that I use the example of the fireworks that were gonna be done in four cities and just.
I definitely like the idea. I like the idea, but I think it's a policy tab. Yep, that's what.
Right, right.
Beautiful. Okay, modification to our, uh, sales tax revenue forecast. How many would like to discuss changing those projections?
I'm okay to have that discussion.
Okay, so we've got two for the discussion. Kayleen's came and went, I assume it should stay.
Yes.
All right, so we've just got the two for that one. Property tax rate is fixed versus floating. This almost seems to go into, where did the property tax one go? There it is, row thirteen, property tax increase. Instead of property tax increase, what if we were to make that first one just a more general property tax? Or do we need to have this separate?
It's a holiday discussion. I, I brought it up. It's a policy discussion. I think that we need to set after this budget is all, is done as well, but it can definitely, I mean, that will play into the discussion on property taxes for the budget as well.
So we'll leave the first one as it was. The second one moved to pop to the policy tab, but then anticipate that we'll have some discussion when we hit property tax.
Done.
City website. This is kind of an in the weeds, but it's also like a bull thistle. I appreciate that smile, Councilmember Pack. All right, so we've got Councilmember Green on there, and this had my name associated with it earlier, so we'll call it two. Council contingency.
Well, and, and I was on mute there. Um, yes, I'm happy to discuss website, too, cuz ultimately it could save more money than we're spending if it streamlines processes.
Okay, council contingency for the next one. Councilmember Whitelock, are you for the council contingency, or is that for the, for the website?
Council contingency.
Okay, one, two for the council contingency. Any more for council contingency? Three.
Yes.
Four. Five. Beautiful. Okay, we'll call it five. This next one, this kinda goes with the in-sourcing versus outsourcing, but again, with, it's also kind of in the weeds because it's a line item, but it's kind of policy, but it's something that we could kind of add to the conversations this year. Uh, let me lower the hands real quick.
Let me chime in on this for a second. I believe I can work within the current budget to get this accomplished. Let me try to on this for a second. I believe I can work within the current budget to get this accomplished.
All right. Um, how many feel like this would need to be discussed, given Denise saying, yeah, I think I can do that.
Sorry, in the works.
Hey, you know, the S and stack also would put fit right well in the middle of the chest in a blue, blue outfit.
Thank you. We are actually already have an RFP ready to go on the street. Um, this was something I was already working on. So it's good.
All right. So I don't see any for discussion on that one. So let's just, that one's mine. We'll just delete it from the list altogether. And then let's go back up to the top and let's resort this first by prior. Well, it's a selected resort it by priority in column E with a secondary sort on discuss in column G. Beautiful. Okay. How does that look to the council for an outline of the topics to discuss during these budget conversations? Okay. So we will take this as kind of just the outline and we'll, we'll start now. First up, dumpster program. And I know there's a lot of thoughts on this one. I think I'll jump in on most of the others. I'll be pretty quiet and, and make sure the others can have a chance to speak first, but the dumpster programs, when I did really want to talk about, I know my neighborhood is not as economically advantaged as others out there. And there are some folks that it, it really helps. It really helps having that available, keeping the neighborhood up. At the same time, we recognize that there is a lot of expense that goes into the dumpster program as it exists today. And I don't think we can continue. I don't think anyone's under the illusion that we can continue with the program the same way in the exact same format that it is now. My thought was I'd like to see if there's a way that we can reduce, reduce the expense, ideally so that the first one would be free. These things fill up pretty quick. I think we could reduce the number of days that are out there. Perhaps we could put a cap on them, say, first one's free over the course of the year. My, my biggest concern is that when we start having a charge associated with it, people start thinking this is mine. I own this, even if it's a relatively nominal fee. People feel like they put their money in and that's theirs. And then it no longer becomes a community dumpster. It becomes a private dumpster. I'd be totally supportive of a program that says, if this is for individual use only, then yeah, absolutely. They, they pay us a, a good fee for that, since it's still less than what they would private. But for those that are truly going to be open to the neighborhood, I, I'd like to see if we can find a way to do the first one free and still give people an opportunity to call up, schedule it. So it's at their convenience. Number two, absolutely. There's a charge for number two, encourage coordination with neighbors. But I think at least the folks that I've spoken with would even prefer, uh, to see a, a small increase to the, such as like thirty cents or twenty five cents a month to the garbage rate to ensure that, that they can continue with the first one free rather than a fifty dollar charge for something that's supposed to be a, a neighborhood good. So that was my thought on that. I'll back up and let others chime in because this was one that a lot wanted to talk about. So don't wait to be called on, but just kind of politely cycle through whoever would like to jump in. Please do.
Philosophically, I agree with you that it, it, the, the free dumpster program is nice. The, the difficulty for me is that even if, and, and Denise can probably correct me with my math. Cause I don't know how many duplicate users we had, but we did forty four hundred dumpsters last year. If I remember the number right, at fifty bucks a piece, uh, that's two hundred and something K. Assuming that they're all one, that they're all the same. They're all one time users. That means that we would then also increase the, solid waste. I could, I was thinking stormwater. Uh, it would mean that we would increase the solid way. We would have to increase the solid waste fee by a, a few bucks a year for everybody in the city. And I guess that, I guess the policy decision that we have to make is that two hundred, is that two hundred K? That gets added to a solid waste bill. To, to have cleanups, because I think we could come up with a neighborhood cleanup that if you had nine or 10 neighbors say, yeah, we're all going to go in, that we could provide that dumpster. But if, but if, if this is just the dumpster program, I think the policy decision that we have to make is are we getting the intangible benefit of, of having a clean city worth having all residents in the city pay for four thousand homes to use dumpsters during the year? I think that's the, the question that we have to, that we have to answer. If we had the money and we weren't tight, I'd probably lean towards the free dumpster in the, this tight year. I'm not sure I wanted to go that way. If we could come up with a compromise, twenty five bucks for a dumpster, maybe, uh, something in there. I might be able to, to live with that. But I just don't want to, I don't want to have a, a massive subsidy. You know, it's six hundred and something K right now. Uh, and I'm, I, I just don't know where the subsidy ought to lie. Uh, and so that's where I'm torn is what would, what would be the appropriate subsidy, particularly given the fact that we're talking about, uh, increase in property tax or an increase or uh, and a slight increase on, on water or on utility bills as it is to, to fund ongoing expenses. So I don't know where that lies. I mean, I'm willing to take a look at it if we could play with some numbers. But yeah, I, somewhere in the middle maybe, but I don't know if I want to come, I don't know what the answer is.
So Denise, a while back we spoke and kind of played with some, some scenarios. I know I wasn't there for the final. Do you still happen to have some of the stuff that was down? I think it was like dropping the subsidy from six hundred thousand down to, I think it was like a hundred and thirty or something like that. And in order to make things work to allow for the first one free, we'd have to limit it. So instead of the full four thousand, we'd have to put a cap. Say something like two thousand dumpsters, shorten the number of days it was out there. Some, how, do you, do you have any of those still handy to share how it can be achieved?
Um, well, if you did, um, a maximum of fifteen hundred dumpsters available for free during the year, then it could be achieved within the current, I think within the current budget. Um, if we were to subsidize all dumpsters, we have, we would have and Count Chairman Conahay, you, you, you shared with me that at some point in the last few years, I guess, the dumpsters were doubled. Like we used to only have eight. Now we have sixteen.
Yeah.
So that's part of the problem. So that we would have to limit the number of dumpsters that are even available and then limit the number of free ones that would be available. So there still would not be a first free for anyone that wanted one. It would be, the city will allow one thousand free dumpsters and it's first come, first served, and you can only have it once.
Or a lottery. Can we, can we have a lottery and get in trouble with the Utah constitution?
That'd be fun.
Okay.
Or we, or you know, Chairman Conahay, we could run. What, what Brian was, was really working with ASON is running a neighborhood cleanup plan where we would twice a year or three times a year, spring, summer and fall, bring ten dumpsters into one neighborhood area or park, allow it for twenty four hour dumping for free and then pull them out. That would also accomplish the same kind of thing and maybe allow for more participation.
Real quick, if Mr. Ricky were here, he would insist that we clarify for the record that council member Green was only joking with that, with that suggestion. So.
But we could only do one or the other. There wouldn't be much capacity for us to do both. So if we want to run a full on neighborhood park kind of cleanup program where everyone has access to dumpsters and we managed it or.
How much, how much of the dumpster program is funded out of the general fund? Any?
Nothing. It's all out of the solid waste fund. So. To do the dumpster program, if we were not to charge that fifty dollars, we would need to raise the, the utility fee another five percent.
So I'll just put in my, my, I, I like the idea of what you put together, the fifty dollars for the first time. Was it a hundred and fifty or two hundred after that?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Um, and then I like the idea of the neighborhood. I think, cause like you said, it gives access to more people. And then it puts it under our control more, where we can get them out and get them back. And, you know, I like that. So.
So Denise, here's a question, and I, and I think I asked this before. If we use the, 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 I think they're ten yards. So whatever, we use those big dumpsters, uh, the ten yard dumpster for the neighborhood cleanups. What would it cost? And we probably don't know right now, but would there, what would it cost to have ten or twelve of the small dumpsters? And we charge, and we charge those for, because it sounded like you said, we could only do one or the other, that the city managed one or the individual. If we were to have a dozen small dumpsters, that could be rented out for, and I'm assuming that because of the tonnage and everything else, a smaller fee would work. It, it, is that, is that a possibility to have the neighborhood cleanups, but yet still have a, a, like what you were suggesting with having the nine or 10 dumpsters at a park or in a neighborhood? And then have a smaller dumpster available to, uh, for some of this more routine stuff. It may be a, a redo, a cost that's not fifty bucks.
Right. Um, we did, Brian Clegg is online. He's an attendee. If we wanted to bring him in as a panelist, but he spoke with Ace about those. Those are called front loading dumpsters versus the truck loading dumpsters. And Ace said they would not be interested in, in, um, supporting that kind of a program because it increases the liability because they're driving their trucks on people's concrete, because typically those are ones that are dropped on driveways versus out in the street and that there's a lot more liability to damage concrete. Brian?
But, but they already dump on driveways. So that doesn't make sense.
Well, the front load trucks are heavier than the, than the rear load trucks. That's, that's the problem.
Okay.
Um, and, and most, uh, and that's another reason, mo- most driveways aren't built for that heavy of a load. Talking to Ace, they, they don't really have any other small dumpsters rather, other than the, the front loads and they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be interesting doing that just because of the liability that would come back on them. They did, I discussed in length with them on the, on the, you know, options with the neighborhood cleanup. If the neighborhood wants to set up a cleanup, they deliver the dumpsters or they would assist us, because we have our own dumpsters too. We have a few dumpsters that we could set up parks, spring, summer and fall, do it on a Saturday, a few hours on a Saturday, uh, staff, we would, we would manage it. We have one roll off truck that we could haul dumpsters with. Ace could not help us on a Saturday, but they could do the DOT regulations and their drive times with their drivers. But they could come in on Monday and offload those dumpsters and take them to the landfill. Because you know, as well as I do on a good Saturday at a landfill on a nice day, there's lines getting into that and the time to take to deliver and dump ten dumpsters, it wouldn't work. So we just keep them on site and then empty them on a Monday, but they're open to, to, to help us. Other than the, they, they won't do the front load, the smaller cans. They do have a smaller can, but it's just not as, uh, it's, it's a fifteen yard, but it's the same length really as the thirty yard. It's just not as tall. So there, there are some options there to accommodate the residents, um, if, if the, the free dumpsters go away. And we can also look, another possibility is look at, uh, I know years ago, when I was a kid, Wes Jordan used to hand out dump passes. You could go to the old city hall and pick up dump passes and they could, if they had a truck or means to get it out there, they could get into the landfill for free. But again, I don't know what that would do to the budget and working with, on the vouchers. So anyway.
Is there a way to double check and see, you know, other, other cities that have done this? Because it seems like with either action we take, there's going to be, you know, with any action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. We're going to cause one problem by trying to solve another. Is there a way of seeing what similar cities have done? You know, the problems associated with no fee versus charging a fee?
I'm not aware of any city that has no fee.
Yeah.
Tay- Taylorsville delivers dumpsters into neighborhoods for free.
By resident?
Not by order, but by neighborhood.
Yeah, it's by neighborhood. You're right, council.
So does West Valley, but it has to be, uh, organized.
Yes, the neighborhood has to organize it.
In Taylorsville, they just do it.
You have. The resident.
Know.
And it, with Taylorsville though, from what I understand, it's, there's a timeframe given for districts. They have it split up in districts and there's timeframes given. And you can apply to get a dumpster and you have it for so many days and.
Kind of similar what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Some of the other cities chart, do the dumpster program, but they charge, uh, and then Sandy does the curbside pickup and they just put it in their fee. They subsidize, subsidize it citywide and do a curbside pickup twice a year, but they're having to move away from that. More of a neighborhood dumpster program as well. They do not, Sandy does not give the, the private dumpster for free. They charge the full rate.
So I guess where I'm at is as long as we provide something, whether it is a dump pass, which may or may not, I wouldn't want to drive my vehicle to the dump, the truck, my husband's truck. Okay. My vehicle, no. So I don't know, but as long as we provide something where residents can get rid of large refuge for free, I want us to be able to not be raising the solid waste fee to support those few that have dumpsters all the time. So however we need to do that, I'm good with. I'm fine with charging a nominal fee for the first dumpster. Cause I feel like, I think Brian said it was a thirty yard. I don't know what you said, Brian.
Yeah, our dumpsters, the, the dumpsters that Ace delivers for us are thirty yards.
Yeah. A thirty yard dumpster. I think, you know, I may not be able to afford fifty dollars on my own, but I'll bet I could get four of my neighbors and we could each come up with ten dollars to use the dumpster. So I don't think it's a large fee. So as long as we provide a component where they have an opportunity for the use of a free dumpster somewhere, whether that's they join neighbors and get together and they have a dumpster brought into the neighborhood because X amount of them signed up for it together, or if it's at a park. That's where I'm at.
The parking, I think, might be a little bit difficult, especially on the east side of the city where some live a little bit further from parks. Um, I'm also thinking about some of the, the seniors who may not have a truck. It's nice to, there's a convenience factor to being able to have something delivered straight to your place. I know there's also a number of service projects that people can do when they say, well, we're going to do something at this particular house. They schedule the dumpster for a certain day. I do worry as soon as you, as soon as you throw that fee in there, even if it's split with four or five neighbors, people starting to claim ownership with that one. Um, I like the idea of charging for the second or, uh, and, and limiting, I, I guess if in my idea of a best case scenario would be limiting the number of dumpsters. best case scenario would be limiting the number of dumpsters to fifteen hundred or whatever that number happens to be for the year on a first come, first serve. And then charging for the, the second one. Uh, but still making it clear that even with the charge, and, and I think even with that charge for the second one, it's going to be difficult to help people understand that it's still open for the community. Anybody can dump into it. But that would be, that would be my, my desire to find a way to do the first one free through limiting the ones that are out there so that we can kind of continue historically what's been done rather than a cold turkey change. I guess my question would be, would there be three others who would support? Uh, asking Denise to look into a proposal that would, that would support that.
So Chris, if we did that, would you be amenable to that only a certain number could go into a neighborhood?
Sure.
For a year for free then? Because if, if the stance is these are for everyone in the neighborhood to use, then every neighborhood shouldn't need, like I have a neighbor that gets one three times a year. They put it in their driveway. I would never go use that. It's in their driveway. I feel it's theirs. So three times a year, we're subsidizing them to fill a dumpster and I have issues with that. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, so sitting here. I- if we could limit it to fifteen hundred dumpster services, whatever we call, and, and that breaks us even without a major uh, increase, knowing that we go beyond the, the free fifteen hundred people will charge. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, if two things, ca- can we? And is it feasible? Cause I don't want to increase the administrative costs of this. Uh, I'm concerned that all fifteen hundred dumpsters would end up in. So I'm just kidding. I'll just say, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm concerned that all fifteen hundred dumpsters will end up in the Maples or, or, you know, and I'm just throwing that out just to give Zach a hard time. But can we, is there a way to say fifteen hundred and it's based on some, some, some area criteria for the city? Like I said, I don't want to make it uh, too administratively, administratively burdensome, but you know, if it's if it's, uh, you know, if it's fifteen hundred, maybe the number ought to be four hundred per council district or something like that. Uh, if, is, is that possible? I, I'm open to some of those possibilities. To, to at least look at, uh, because I do think that the dumpster program has value. I just don't want to, I don't want to increase the stormwater or the solid waste fees by five percent. So if we can make that break even uh, with some limited, with some limited free dumpsters, then a- and, and I would say that it's not first come, first serve at the first of the year. It's first come, first serve at the first of the month and a couple of those kinds of things to help people. Uh, you know, or sixty days out, but if we can put, come something like that. Uh, I'd think, I'd think about doing that. I just don't want to, I just don't want a complete subsidy of five percent to, to go on the, uh, the water bill. So if we can come up with somewhere in between, I'm probably good with that.
But if we do the free dumpsters, even at a limited amount, then we can't do some, like a neighborhood cleanup, can we? It has to be one or the other. So I think the big question that we should look at is, do you want to support a limited amount of free dumpsters? Or do you want to support a neighborhood cleanup?
Nicely stated.
I know, smart every once in a while.
And so having worked with both, I'm not a fan of the neighborhood cleanup. You've got to be there on that particular date that's scheduled. Um, and it, it there, there, there's a significant convenience factor and, and kind of like a personalization where we're, we're shooting for a home of the good neighbor as, as our motto. It feels like that's like allowing the neighbors to, to pick the date. It's dropped off right there. The neighborhood can kind of, kind of group together. Um, I, I've, I've seen the, the group ones. I'm, I'm not a big fan of them. That's just, that's just me though. So I like what we've done for, yeah.
Should we just try to take a, I mean, a poll of, yeah. I mean, do we want to look at a limited amount of free dumpsters? On whatever basis, we can figure that out if that's the majority, or do we want, the majority want to look at a neighborhood cleanup?
How many would be in favor of having Denise look into a proposal that continues? Pretty much continues what we've been doing on a limited basis so that we can continue to offer at least some element of free dumpster on, on request? So I see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to any and all.
Are we doing the hand raising or are we doing?
Yeah, I was watching for the hand raise. So like, cause I'm looking at pictures. I know some of the council don't have their things up. I've got to jump through like three screens to find everybody anyway. So the hand raised would be easier.
Sure. I mean, I'm, I'm open minded. If it's really important to you, I want it to be important to me. We can discuss it and it's, you know, really that, that because I, I see that no matter what we do, it's going to cause a pro and a con either way. So it would be nice to get a proposal to figure out all the, all the pros and cons. And I love the idea of bringing community together for neighborhood cleanup. But a- as you mentioned, Cher, it's really hard for people to synchronously have that exact day, exact time. And you know, if we do offer services that people can use to clean up, well then things are cleaner and it raises our property values and everybody's happy. It's, you know, you can see it both ways. If you charge a fee and people are saying this is mine. So.
All right. So the show of hands on the, on the Zoom, how many are in favor of looking and asking Denise to look into something similar to what I had suggested? Yeah, one, David Pack is there. Pack, Green, myself makes three. How many would like to look into a change to either pay for use or neighborhood?
Well, I thought that was inclusive of it, that we're trying to figure out. You know, what.
Either or. Do you want a limited amount of dumpsters free? Or do you want to do a neighborhood cleanup? You can pick one.
Guess it'd be a little bit of a dumpster's free, but I don't know.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, sorry. That was cutting out. Please.
I was just wondering if I'm the only one that's having a sense of deja vu. Did we not have this big old conversation about this fairly recently and come to some sort of conclusion?
We had a conversation, but it was in a workshop where we only had about five minutes to discuss at the end and not everybody had a chance to, to speak. So that's, that's where this is coming up again. All right. So I'm seeing the one hand. So it's looks like three in the one, which means there's, there's three that didn't suggest.
Does that mean three support the current plan that's in the budget? I don't know.
No, that was three supporting, um, what I had been, what, what I had requested or suggested. The continuation, some form of continuation of what we've done. Um, but it seemed like council member pack was one of those, but there was the, the question there. So.
So can we do another like, okay, everyone hit their button? Is that what you're doing, Councilmember Connie?
Trying to, so we can see it that way.
Everyone hit your button. Do you support?
My button isn't up.
Oh. A program. Okay. I can see you all except for Zach and Chad. Um, do you support a free, hi Chad, a free dumpster program on a limited basis? Raise your hand. If you, that's the only option versus a neighborhood cleanup. Okay. So I've got one, two, three, four, five. Now, do you support instead, the other two would have to be supporting a neighborhood cleanup? Is that correct? Okay. So it's the majority saying they want a free dumpster program that is limited to subsidization at the same level as a neighborhood cleanup.
Because then we're not having to raise other fees, correct?
Right. Within the same fee structure.
I, I don't know how I feel actually. That's why I didn't vote because I.
What we need is for somebody to bring forward a proposal and then we can have a vote. And if it passes, then great, we've got a policy. And if it doesn't pass.
Someone will bring, will bring a proposal to your net, uh, someone will bring a proposal to your next meeting. How's that? And that's.
The only concern I have with the limited amount is it just cuts out a majority amount because you're talking a small amount of people get that dumpster for free. And then nobody else in the city wants that cap is there. If we do a neighborhood cleanup program, then that encompasses everybody in the city. At some point we'll cover the whole city where you'll have an opportunity to throw things away at no charge. So there's my concern with the limited be, because the limited is just limited to the first thousand people and then it's done.
But you're assuming.
How many thousands of people? Like thirty-four thousand households?
You're assuming that you, and I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to be the devil advocate there, Melissa. You're assuming that if we ran a dumpster program and be able to put it in every neighborhood, you're assuming that every that the, the residents would be able to take advantage of that. And I'm going to tell you that, you know, what, what, you know, what happens if, if the na- if the dumpsters get the city schedules a dumpster, uh, let's say for example, I, I, you know, they, they schedule a dumpster on Misty Hollow Way in uh, West Jordan. Well, that's on Chad Street, but mine's four streets over. Why, why would I drive, why would I put the stuff in my truck? It, and drive it over three or four streets when I can just drive it to the dump in, in, and take another fifteen, you know, take another twenty minutes, assuming the line's not backed up.
Cause it would take you twenty minutes and a cost versus, all I'm saying is I'm trying to think of the whole. Because I mean, I wouldn't have it by my house either if we put it by a park. I mean, I do have a park, but I'd still have to haul it over to there. I'm just trying to think of majority. You're limiting it to a thousand residents versus.
We're not limit, we're limiting it to it. What, what I would say is we're limiting it to a thousand, um, a thousand or fifteen hundred free. But that doesn't mean that somebody else couldn't pay the cost of the dumpster to get it. Or, 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 you know, pay fifty or seventy-five dollars to get it at a reduced rate in their own front yard.
Um, sure. But if, if you leave it to a neighborhood program, you're going to hit more than a thousand people.
Uh, I would disagree.
And that's all I'm thinking is you're, you know, you would have a, a bigger majority of people.
I don't.
Let me say, the one thing that I might be concerned about on your behalf would be the one thousand fifteen hundred and one phone, one phone call. So.
That's what I'm concerned about too.
Whoever doesn't get the free because we've run out, they're not going to be happy because they subsidized a service and received no benefit.
Well, but they're still receiving a benefit. It's at a much reduced cost currently sixty-six percent.
Once those fifty, fifteen hundred free, all the rest of them are two hundred dollars apiece.
Oh, well, I, okay. So that's part of the conversation.
Saying.
It doesn't need to be two. I didn't, so we're saying that after fifteen hundred, it's two hundred dollars now instead of.
Yeah. To be able to stay within a budget. So I'm just saying, what's going to be more beneficial for the masses?
The most.
Probably the fifty dollars.
The fifty dollars, actually.
Remember currently they are all free as many times as you want. Well, not as many.
But the fifty dollars includes the neighborhood cleanup program, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if we do fifty dollars for the first one and then the neighborhood cleanup program.
Right.
That, that's what that includes. But the fifteen or a thousand dumpsters free means only the first thousand people get it. And then after that, you're two hundred bucks. I just don't like limiting it to a thousand people and then everybody else is out of luck.
Right. That part was missing from the equation is that it's two hundred instead of fifty. And all of our back and forth talking, yeah.
So I've decided had a vote. I'm voting to stay with the plan.
Okay. So let's revote now that everyone has an understanding. Do you support the current plan?
Which is?
Fifty dollars for every first rental and two hundred dollars for each subsequent rental. And adding a neighborhood cleanup plan that the city manages.
Want to start a little hand?
I see Zach's hand.
I can support.
One, two, three, four. Okay. Now who supports fifteen hundred free dumpsters, first come, first serve? And every dumpster after that is two hundred dollars. What? And Kaylee, you haven't decided still?
No, I voted the first.
Raise your hand. Oh, sorry. I didn't see the, I don't see the hands.
Oh, sorry.
So we're supporting the current program of fifty dollars for the first dumpster and two hundred dollars for subsequent dumpsters. And a citywide neighborhood cleanup plan that will be managed by Public Works.
Yes.
So.
Make an ordinance. Let's do it.
Council has, I don't think we need an ordinance for that. I think as we pass the budget, that takes care of it.
Go ahead.
I think we need a resolution or something, but I think it is.
We'll have a resolution passing the budget that includes that. But, uh, yeah, I just want to be on the record, obviously with my, uh, concern and opposition for that one, but council has spoken, so let's move on. Fees for service. Uh, Councilmember Green, do you want to speak to this one?
Sure, I can start. So if you look at the fee schedule, we have sca- we have some fees that the last time anybody can remember when it was changed was pre-two thousand and six. Uh, so the last time some of these fees were updated was fourteen years ago. Uh, some of the other fees, as you scroll down the fee schedule, I mean, there have been a few that have been updated. The business license fee schedule was heavily debated. And I'm not going there. I'm not going down the road with the business license fees, by the way. Um, what I am suggesting is that on a lot of these, for example, I, if I remember right, I didn't pull out the budget book. If I remember right, the dog license is about eight bucks. Is that right, Denise? Uh, I think the dog license is eight dollars. Uh,
Altered, yes.
It, it costs, it costs us more than eight dollars to process it and pay the, you know, to pay the postage to get it out than what we're doing. And yes, I understand that there's a public, there's a public policy interest that we've tried to keep those fees at a minimum. But you know, if we're talking, and so my, my philosophy is the pre-two thousand and six, and I think this would, I, I think this would make it reasonable and still generate a, a few bucks. Uh, is that my thought from a policy standpoint is anything from pre-two thousand and six through two thousand and ten, um, would be increased fifteen percent. Anything between two thousand and ten and two thousand fifteen would be increased by five percent. If they're not on the current schedule and then anything between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and eighteen, that gives us anything changed in the last two years, doesn't have an inflationary, would be raised by three percent. That was, that was my thought was the old, the old ones get raised about fifteen percent. The, the, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen get raised five percent. And so on a dog license, you're talking about, you're talking about a dollar and a quarter. Uh, helps us offset the cost and, and Denise never ran the, the, the numbers for me, but if it, if it created an overall uh, fi- uh, fee increase of five percent, it would add two hundred thousand or so dollars to the budget. If it added ten thou- uh, ten percent, uh, which I don't think it would get quite to ten percent, probably be closer to seven or eight with the fifteen and the average. But if, if we raised, if we could raise overall the fee rate by seven percent, eight percent, that would give us, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. To put that in perspective, by raising the fees, just that little percentage is as much as if we raised property taxes by two or three percent. So y- you know, if it's a hu- if we raise a hundred and fifty K off of fines by just the, our fines fees, uh, we raise those, those fees by a, a, a small percentage that makes it inflationary. Then that would get us, uh, the equivalent of a property tax and it's the people who are paying for the, who, And it's the people who are paying for the, who, who are getting the, the service or the benefit from the city. Uh, they're, they're paying for the benefit that I, I'll use myself as a perfect example, and I'm gonna thank Dan Laws for throwing me under the bus. Uh, Dan was the one that decided that, that we needed the chicken ordinance in West Jordan City. My wife decided that we needed chickens. So yes, I have five chickens in my backyard that I have to deal with every day with water and chicken feed. And yes, I get four or five, I get four, I get a dozen eggs a week, but I'm certainly paying more than what I would pay at Lucky or at Winco to pay for my eggs.
Please tell me you named them something like orange or kung pow.
My granddaughter named them. But i- i- I'm paying fifteen bucks to, to have chickens in my backyard. All right, if I have to pay, uh, if I have to pay sixteen dollars and fifty cents to have the chickens, it's not, so that the city can have it on file, so that when somebody calls and complains about the chicken, they say, yeah, we know about it and everything's okay. Then, uh, you know, that, that extra dollar is not gonna, I don't think that extra dollar is gonna fundamentally cause, you know, so that's, that was my thought on this one is that we haven't changed the fees inflationary wise for a long time. As, as Kayleen mentioned, animal services is talked about, they, they would like some fee rates, uh, fee rate increases and some of those kind of things. And so that's why I was just thinking that they're on, instead of looking at every little fee, we look at some sort of across the board, uh, inflationary adjustment and then adopt for the future. And I, I don't even plan on talking about that. But you know, at some point in time, if we, if we bring the old fees up to, let's say, about the twenty eighteen level, then in a year or two, then we can say, all right, all the fees got raised in two thousand and eighteen or beyond. What's the inflationary rate that we keep those fees inflationary? Instead of trying to play this catch-up game that we're playing. So that was my thought and I'm, you know, like I said, I, I think we probably generate a hundred and fifty to four hundred K in revenues, probably closer to two twen- two hundred or so. But it's, it's just one of those things that we haven't kept up with the times. We've, we, we keep kicking the fee schedule down the road and probably time to update it and modernize it.
So I would dovetail into that. I, I think it's on the right track. I'd want to, um, modify what you're proposing just a little bit. Say, here's what the current fee is. As, as we're looking at the fee schedule, use that as a starting point. Say, here's the, each of the fees, here's where it's at today, here's the modifier, and then here's what the proposed rate's gonna be. Uh, but then we, I'd still like to review each one of them. Uh, I know that in the past for a number of the fees, we've had to do a justification study to show that we're not bringing in anything more than staff time would allow. There are some that for one reason or another, we may not want to adjust. And then there are others that are larger, like when it gets to impact fees or development fees. Um, there, there's a separate, uh, rule set for them, uh, with all those lovely, Raftellus is the, the, the one that's stuck in my head, but, um, I can't remember the name of the company that does our impact fee studies all the time. But, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind starting off and looking at it like that. Um, as long as we, we double check each one to make sure that there aren't other factors that need to be considered. Potential increase.
I'd be okay with that too, to just, you know, look at the modifier and then look at, you know, if, if there's something's way out of line, fix it. But then.
I don't think we need to look at each one individually, but I would say that you can make a list of the ones that do need to be looked at individually. And I think so, I think several you can just, you can simply justify by saying, look, it's inflation. You know, plan on two and a half percent a year, three percent a year for twenty years and, and your costs are gonna go up. We can justify it that way. But those that do need to be looked at individually, like if there is a good justification for not changing fee A, X, Y, or Z, then bring that forward and say, I don't think we should change this one, this one, and that one, and we can have that discussion.
It sounds like when you say look at, you mean discuss. So we are gonna like look at every single fee out there, but we're only gonna have some for discussion. It's not like we're blind to some.
Well, yeah, okay, semantics, but kind of anyway, yeah.
Chair, are, can we find out if people are in favor of including a fee for a filing fee for those seeking office?
Sure. Won't generate a lot of money, but yeah.
Right, it doesn't, but Kelvin, guess what? I think on the chicken fee from your key word in that sentence, we could raise that fee for like thirty bucks and you'd still pay it.
I would be forced to pay it or otherwise I'd be out of compliance with the ordinance, but yeah, nevermind.
Your wife would make you pay it. That was the key word, the wife.
That's right.
So can we vote?
How much of a fee, how much of a fee are you talking about?
Something nominal, twenty, thirty bucks. It's just enough to help cover the cost that it's costing the city. I was shocked when it was nothing, because when I ran for school board, I, I laid out fifty bucks to file and another something that I don't remember for a map. And then I go to the city hall and they give me this book. They tell me that they'll give me this big map. And I'm like, how much is it? And they're like, free. I'm like, oh, okay.
Counsel, I ask.
So I, sorry, sorry, Corbin, real quick, are we done then with the fees for service, the inflationary increase?
We decide anything?
I, I, I don't think so. That's why, before we change and start talking about additional fees, I wanna make sure that.
But my fees aren't in there. That's why I'm bringing it up, because I figured it was rolled into that.
Yeah, we, we can add, we, we can address that. I just wanna double check, uh, with the fees for service, the fees that are already out there. How many are in favor of, uh, taking the, starting down the path that Kelvin's been proposing?
Yes, fee, fee for fee. Just use the fee for what the fee is being generated for and, and covering the cost of the personnel. Yes, we're not going in the hole.
Okay, it looks like, I can't see Councilmember Lamb, but it looks like I've either seen a hand or a.
He's raising his hand. I can see him.
Oh yeah, there's.
See, his screen's black for me.
Well, he was, he just went black. But what, what, what does this mean? I'm confused. That I'm doing an inflationary increase or I'm bringing you back fees or how is this working?
So, the way I would see this going with the workshop time that we have at the beginning of our regular meetings, uh, we will dedicate some time, we'll still be dedicating some time to budget. So in one of those, as, as soon as reasonably possible, an updated fee schedule saying, here's a column, here's the percentage proposed adjustment with what the council's suggesting, this is what the new fee would be. And then as we look at that in the work session, if there are any specific fees we want to address, we can, we can do that there. So it'd be, it'd be coming back. And then after that work session, if we like what we see in that updated fee schedule, we'll ask you to replace the fee schedule in this budget with that updated.
Basically, starting with the, starting point of what Kelvin suggested.
Yeah.
Thirty dollars for chickens.
Yeah, thirty dollars for chickens.
Uh, however, with the, with that, um, as you bring that back, I know there are some specific fees that staff has said, this is where we think it should be. Please just put the staff recommendation in there. I think that still accomplishes what Councilmember Green was asking. And if it doesn't necessarily match up with the percentage, it, it doesn't matter. It's closer to what they think it should be.
And that's, that's true.
And I agree with Kayleen. I think we should add the fifty dollar fee for filing.
Yeah, so that's, that's the next question. With that fee schedule, how many would be in favor of adding a filing fee? Before we talk about the amount, how many are wanting to add a fee for filing?
I would.
Yes, it's taking a lot of staff time to prepare everything.
I'm seeing five.
Okay.
With Zach's verbal.
I didn't give you a verbal, a verbal on this one. I'm actually, that was, I think Kelvin. Okay, okay, somebody else. Anyway, uh, on, on this one, I would like to have this as a, as a later discussion item just because we're talking about what a total of a couple of hundred bucks to the budget. I don't, it's not gonna materially impact the budget for this year, so I don't think it's imperative to put it in right now. I would like to have the conversation definitely before the filing period next year. And probably earl- before, early next year, sometime in the next six or eight, six or seven months. But I don't think it needs to be a part of the budget discussion necessarily. I think there's a lot of pros and cons that I'd like to discuss, but I just don't think it matters that much.
And you're right, Zach. We, we've got, because we don't have any filings coming up, we've got a little bit of wiggle room.
We actually do, June of next year.
We've almost got a year to, to, to figure that one. And I don't wanna wait here, by the way.
No, yeah, for sure.
I think you're right. Uh, if we, if we make sure that we have that discussion, uh, I think that, that would be appropriate. I, because we're not gonna get any money off, off of that now. But philosophically, I think I agree with Kayleen that it, it would be, uh, nice to collect something to pay for some staff time that they do spend a lot of time with candidates, so.
All right, so let's double check then. If you would use the, the button in Zoom, I'll lower everybody's hand. But how many are in favor of including a filing fee in this, in the new fee schedule? So I'm seeing three hands there.
I'm ambivalent, so I, I'll make it four and then we can, we can have it.
So we've got four. So when, when that fee schedule's brought, there will be a new line for filing fee. Do we want to discuss the amount of that fee now, or since there's only four, do you wanna leave that for the, the service fee discussion that we'll have in a workshop later and move on to the next item for now?
I'd suggest bringing forth in the discussion a comparison of what other cities charge, if anything. What other offices charge.
I've already asked staff to work on that. Look at the fee, uh, comparison on filing fees with all other cities within Salt Lake County. Uh, so if I would, if I can, I'd like to, uh, have you take a look at that comparison with other cities and the average of those other cities. So as you're making a decision there, or as we bring forth a recommendation, you can see where we would stand, where we stand currently. Yep. Where we would stand relative to other cities on that.
We gotta stand at the bottom right now, because zero's as low as it goes.
I, what I've heard anecdotally is that we're the only city with no filing fee at all, but I'm not sure if that's true. I've asked staff to confirm.
So generous. I mean, just giving everything away.
Dumpsters.
Cause it's your money, Melissa.
Frick! Stop that. I'm poor.
Hey, so I'd like to see if we can wrap up about eight thirty or so and how much we can get through by then. So we'll have the fee schedule brought back. And then the next item, I think we've got time to discuss this within the next fifteen minutes or so. No decrease to public safety. Councilmember Whitelock, your name is next to this one, is priority, though Councilmember Pack also, also mentioned it. Uh, since your name's by, by priority, do you want to speak to this one?
Sure. And Mike, as I expressed earlier, my concern is that I'm worried that some of the cuts we've made, and it is personnel and personnel is expensive, but and I guess also a frustration is that when I first got in, so a cou- a few years ago, when I was first, Chad and I were first new, we voted for Zach's favorite thing, which is an increase for police and fire. So then to go back and reduce police and fires budget in areas of personnel, that concerns me. So I don't know what we do about that, because that was certainly the mayor's right to do. Um, but I guess, I guess if there's a way for us to, to find money in other areas to re- to, to at least look into, are there areas that we feel got cut that we'd like a person back in that? And the one I'm thinking of in particular is, uh, the Neighborhood Watch Program. That concerns me. I think that's a vi- a, a valuable program. So that's, and I definitely don't wanna see this become a it become the way to balance the budget in years to come. Because then we're going to get right back to where we were when I joined, where people weren't, we couldn't fully staff police and fire, because people didn't wanna come to our city, because they were afraid. I don't want, I don't want that. I want, I, we need to have it fully funded. That, to me, is a top priority.
But let, let me tell you my perspective. I think the, the police department, I looked at their budget, and I think the fire department with, by the way, with the exception of overtime, Kayleen, that you, you mentioned overtime. And I noticed that the, the police overtime budget seemed a little bit high. It was almost twenty-five percent higher request this year than last. Uh, and I think I mentioned that last meeting or last week. But overall, the police have done a good job of reducing their budget and not cutting officers. Uh, I, I mean, we lost it, we lost the budget officer, we lost the neighborhood, uh, watch, uh, you know, the neighborhood watch coordinator and a couple other things. But as I was talking to a couple of the leaders in the police department, at least one, he, he, what he said is that it's also forced them to look at processes. It's forced them to look at efficiencies and it's, a- and, uh, the way to look, look at things. And so I don't think in, 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 from my perspective, the, you know, and I think the overall police and fire budget, I think they both took a, about a five percent, uh, decrease, if I remember right. I'm not concerned about that, because we haven't, we haven't taken anything away from the first responder themselves. Uh, some of the, some of the change, you know, most of the changes were, uh, and we, you know, we, we've had some high retirements of some long time personnel that, uh, seriously helped the budget. Uh, a- and so I, I, I do understand what you're saying, because I, I don't well, you know, we raised the money. Uh, you know, the council raised the, the property taxes a, a couple of years ago to pu- pay for police and fire. I, I would tell you that we've, we've, we've kept that and we're keeping the promise, because we're not, uh, we're, we haven't reduced the, the, the line staff. We haven't reduced the first responders. We've reduced, uh, some others. I, I don't, to, to be honest with you, uh, I don't think that the fire department nor the police department could take a, take another five percent cut next year. Uh, you know, I, I, I think that, at that point in time, I think you're starting to say, uh, we're cutting into first responders and there's no way that I, that I wanna do that. Uh, but I do have to tell you, like I said, with the exception of the overtime, um, budgets, uh, I'm comfortable with the level of service, cause I, uh, and, and you, you make a valid point. We have eliminated the Neighborhood Watch Program. And it may be one of those things that we want to bring back. I would like, it, before we brought that back, I would like to, uh, see the, you know, the, you know, what the efficacy of that kind of a position is uh, and what the cost benefit, uh, a- analysis of that is. But, uh, I, I'm okay with this budget. Uh, next year, uh, it's a whole new budget cycle and there will be some different things. But this year, I'm comfortable that, uh, we haven't cut what we, we, that we haven't cut any critical services in the police department. So I'm, I'm comfortable there.
The one thing we have cut out of there, though, that, that I think is critical, because of the very thing that you bring up, Kelvin, is that our more advanced, more years under their belts, officers and firefighters are leaving and our newbies are here and they need more training. And their training budget, they have cut those as well. That is an area that I think we better also pay attention to, because officers, particularly, I'm thinking of police officers, but even our, our, um, fire paramedics, they are dealing with some really interesting cases these days. And they need training so that it doesn't go bad, because it, if you've ever worked in a psych ward, you know how quickly something can go bad. That's what our pe, folks are working with daily. So I am concerned about the training budget too. And you know, I, I, we just need to be really careful. I don't want, I agree, we didn't lose boots on the ground and I appreciate that. But I, I also agree that for future budgets, especially when I go through the fire, the police departments, I really can see that Chief Wallantine went through and did zero-based budgeting. He did. It's very clear when you look at his numbers.
Well, and just to address your concern on training, I'm looking at the fire department budget. In eighteen nineteen, they spent twenty-four six in money. This year, we're right around thirty-six K and next year we're talking about fifty-three eight. So we're talking about since FY eighteen slash nineteen, we're talking about a based on actual expenditures, we're talking about a hundred percent increase in training. So I don't have a
Now look at police.
However, or sorry. Police goes from one oh four down to seventy.
Yeah.
Right. And ju, just since, since I brought this as one of my main concerns, wh, when I, wh, when I was running to be elected, that's what I, I mentioned, is that I'm a big proponent of public safety. To me, it's the backbone of a successful community. If you look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, number one, you know, you need safety, food, shelter, and if you're not feeling safe, you don't have a sense of community. And then people operate in scared mode. And it just doesn't work. And, and I'm looking at my notes from interacting with Chief Maxfield and Chief Wallantine, and I, I know we have open positions in the police department. It, it's harder to recruit, because people don't want to come, because they're uncertain about this situation. And as was mentioned, you know, maybe we can do this for a year or two, but then we pay the deferred maintenance opportunity cost problems of we're not training, people aren't getting as much opportunity to advance, we lose people to other cities. And, and we, we do need that senior hierarchy as well as entry level and in mid-range. So I would be very reticent to cut service or have a bare bones staff that doesn't have the necessary tools or training for them to be able to do their job in, in protecting and serving the citizens, so that psychologically and with you know, sociology, we, we are feeling safe as a group and safer as individuals in our hearts and minds and homes. And I, and with the, with the overtime, I know that part of that overtime, i- if I'm not mistaken, in the FLSA requirements, Chief Maxfield was mentioning that there are some requirements to have some overtime built in. And as both chiefs mentioned, it's when, when officers or personnel are already out on calls, can't say, well, my shift's up, gotta go. You know, they're right in the middle of a major issue, or somebody calls in sick, especially with our coronavirus situation. So that, that's just why I would, that's why I wanted to bring that up, that yes, we do have trouble in terms of budgeting. I, I would rather use some revenue, some rainy day funds while we have them as opposed to, you know, panic right now and, and cut staff that ultimately leads to more attrition. Thank you.
But the, but the police have already cut the staff. They haven't, they, they've already cut the staff. The staff are gone. They haven't cut any officers. The training budget that is proposed is the exact same amount as what we spent the last fiscal year. So nobody's even suggesting that we're cutting the training budget. I, I think Ken's done a good job. I, I still question the overtime budget a little bit, because we budgeted three sixty-seven last year and we used two ninety-six, and the year before we were three oh eight. And so this number seems a little bit high and he could jump in and explain it if he wants. But a, at the end of the day, I don't think we're, you know, we, we increased the overtime budget by twelve percent. And if I remember right, Denise, the police department's fully staffed. You know, most of the ti, are pretty close to fully staffed. A lot of times you use the overtime in a police department, because you have a lot of turnover and a lot of staff, uh, staff changes and those kinds of things. If we tend to maintain fully staffed positions, you know, maybe the three seventy-eight is, is correct, but overall, I mean, you know, we, we cut seven positions out of a, a budget of nine million dollars. And y, you know, when you look at last year's budget for personnel, it's one percent. When you look at the year before, it's actually an increase in the budget from FY eighteen, FY nineteen. And, and the fire department's pretty consistent that I think that the police and fire department has done a good job of maintaining the costs without reducing, without reducing the services that we rely on. And I, I think is as we look at things incrementally, I think that, that, that budget is a good start. I don't, I mean, I, I agree that I don't want to decrease public safety, but right now, I don't think we've decreased. We haven't, we have not, with the exception of maybe the Neighborhood Watch or a couple, some things like that, but we haven't decreased. We, we have not decreased the public safety level of service. And I think that's what's fundamental to maintain, is the level of service. And as, and, and if the chiefs are comfortable with their training budgets, and if the chiefs are comfortable with that budget, then I think we're okay.
Comfortable, yes. Optimum, no. But then if we're saying that these people that were let go are superfluous, I don't think that that is true either. Obviously, they were providing some level of service to streamline, help officers protect. So yes, they've done a wonderful job. So I'm not trying to say, but basically all I'm trying to say there's as it is saying, don't, let's make sure that we don't lower what is being offered. And if we have open positions, it's not fully staffed. If we're having to let people go, I, I think we can't just say, oh, well, they weren't doing anything to help. So there's something that's being lost. And if we have to lose even more next year, and then next year, it's kind of a slippery slope. I'm just trying to say, let's just watch it. Let's be careful.
So I think with this particular item, where we're not specifically, where we're not talking about a general policy, but where we're talking about like the nuts and the bolts of specific department budgets, I think this is probably something where we want to include the department heads for those, for those conversations. So I wonder if a continued conversation, including the chief, so they can add some color and background, might be appropriate. The other thing that I'm hearing is with the desire to avoid a decrease to public safety, I'm almost wondering, I, I'm really glad that we're hitting this up, up front, one of the first items. But I'm almost wondering if we also move this down towards the end, because as we go through looking for additional savings, if we find other areas where, as we're looking at expenditures that can be reduced, like office supplies and that, can some of those be redirected? And can we say that maybe we want our priority, rather than bringing down the gap in the budget, maybe we, we want our priority to be to sustain public safety funding where it's at. But I, I think this is a, a conversation that might get a little bit more detailed and to make sure that we're not heading down a path that could be potentially problematic. I want to make sure that we have our chiefs involved. And, and
I'd like to ask one question before we wrap this up, and it goes to Denise and Corbin. Just for clarity, which I probably already know the answer to it, but you, you guys worked with the both chiefs, correct, on this budget and their departments and what they can work with and can't work with? And is that correct?
Submit the budget, right?
The chief submitted the budget, yes.
Okay, so the chiefs were asked to cut X amount from their budget prior to submitting, correct?
Correct. They, they prioritized their proposed cuts and up to ten, as much as ten percent. We didn't go that deep. But the chief submitted where they could cut, where they couldn't cut their budgets, not us. We didn't, Denise nor I directed where those cuts should be. The chiefs, the chiefs recommended, this is where we would recommend to cut. So for example, you mentioned the Neighborhood Watch program. The Neighborhood Watch coordinator position was cut. The chief has a recently retired police officer who is very good, who is volunteering to become the Neighborhood Watch coordinator on a volunteer basis and is committed to the department and the community and knows the department and the community. So the chief's, so the chief feels like that program can continue without that salary position. Those kinds of things were taken into account.
I also wanted to chime in and just say, I find it helpful, and I don't know if the chief will like me saying this, but I find it helpful in budget discussions for public safety to talk to the police union and the fire union. They seem to have a good perspective, and not to say, you know, I'm going to do whatever they ask, but they seem to have a good perspective on how changes to the budget will affect the frontline officers' morale and turnover rates and things like that. So I would recommend reaching out to those bodies as well individually as council members, just to get some input there.
All right. So, so on this particular item, I'm, I'm not sure how to ask this question without sparking another thirty to forty minutes of conversation. But for those who brought this up, I'm wondering how you'd like to proceed. If you'd like to have some time from our next work session dedicated to hearing from the chiefs. If you'd like to say this is a concern, so as we're finding other savings, we'd like to see if we can restore some of the funding. How?
I liked that idea that you brought up, Chris. I thought, I think that's a good idea. Putting this one down and, and then, and then having the discussion. If we find that through our other looks, we've found a million dollars and we want to reallocate some of that back into public safety, then I think that's a good time for more of discussion.
Okay. So
I know, I didn't, I didn't think this was a dumpster fire. Did you say dumpster? I didn't think it was that bad.
No, my efforts to retain the dumpster program in some sort of similar fashion, that was a dumpster fire. But so the, this one, is there any objection to moving this down to kind of the bottom of our highest priorities with the anticipation that as we do find savings, we will consider public safety as a location for that?
Can I bring up one point? The majority of the savings in police is the fleet replacement plan, and I'm not sure that that really needs restoration. I mean, there are some small budget cuts in operations, but for the most part, it was because we reworked the fleet replacement plan and went away from leases and went to a purchase program. So while there was some person, um, support personnel cut, and I understand the concern there, operationally, there was hardly any cut there or in overtime. So it was mostly, I mean, we're not being negative, I'm just saying that the majority of it is the fleet replacement plan. And so what would we be restoring?
I, I would be curious to hear from the chief at a later time, because like the D, the DUI overtime, I know a lot of those are pass-through funds, though.
Yeah.
But the professional and technical, I mean, one point three million down to three hundred thousand. Don't get me wrong, I know our police chief has done some phenomenal things and has some amazing resources that really help benefit the city, but I'd be curious what, what changes we would see for that million dollar decrease.
Remember the VAC budget was rolled into a separate line. So you had nothing on the VAC budget in eighteen nineteen, which is the one that
Half of it.
Yeah.
So the other five hundred then. I, I, I'd still, I, I'd still like to hear from police and fire, and i- if they are comfortable with what's out there. I, I guess we've had a fair amount of conversation about wanting to restore stuff, and if there's nothing to be restored, well, we should have talked to them a lot sooner, but at, at least our concern is evident that we want to watch out for public safety and have the conversation.
And I think that the council needs to be cognizant when they're restoring funding to make sure that they look at the city as a whole. I mean, you've got parks, seasonals that went fifty percent funding.
Yeah. Which is why the thought to keep it on there. So all right, well, we are past that eight thirty target that I was hoping for, but is there any, anybody else have any other comment to this item before we drop it towards the bottom of the list? All right, seeing none. The idea will be that we continue with this. This will, we'll walk through each one of these items till we get to the bottom. We're not going to try and do all of these in one meeting. I, it's just way too much. But we'll continue this. Kelvin and I will work on making sure it's agendaized appropriately. We'll use the best, that we, the, use our time the best that we can throughout the regular council meetings as well as those others that we have scheduled. But the goal is to try and get this done in our regular meetings as much as possible. So thank you every, thank you everybody very much for your time this evening. Melissa, did you have a commentary? Were you waiting?
Is our next meeting next, the fourth? On this?
Our next meeting is slated for, where did it go? June tenth is our regular city council meeting.
We did have one.
You know what? These are not in yeah, I'm looking at June fourth. Can you, can you stop sharing your screen for a second, Denise?
Yeah, June fourth.
So just really quick, these are up on the bottom of the agenda. But yeah, the twenty-eighth, so I was looking at the tenth, but yeah, the fourth should come before the tenth. So we'll see how much we can get knocked out. And then on the meeting on the tenth, we're going to be using some of that workshop time to continue the conversation and hopefully, well, we'll see what's needed, but hopefully some of these others will go away. But
Chris, can you remind us what, what, what day do we have to adopt the budget?
Final budget is Denise would know that one better than me.
The twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yep. Okay. So does anybody else have any other comments or a motion to adjourn?
Thank you. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Whitelock, second by councilmember Worthen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll give you plenty of time to voice your opposition. Wait here all night.
You just stay on. We'll see you later.
All right. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.